Welcome to the Cupertino City Council's special meeting. Today is Wednesday, May seventeenth. I'm calling the meeting to order at 5:00 P. M. If you can, please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Wei.
Here, thank you. We are going to the study session. The subject is initial study session on the fiscal year 2023-2024 proposed operating and capital improvement program budget. And the recommended action is to conduct initial study session on fiscal year 2023-2024 proposed operating and capital improvement program budgets and provide direction to staff. So do we have staff reports?
Yes, Mayor Wei. We have a presentation ready for you tonight. And we'll have the presentation up on the screen in a moment. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council and Members of the public. I am pleased tonight to present the city manager's proposed budget to you. Before we dive into the numbers, I want to take a moment to give a big shout out to the budget team and also the directors and those of you who have been putting countless hours in the past month or so for us to get to where we are today. Without your hard work and dedication, I will not have a city manager's proposed budget. So, thank you. So, the budget season is always demanding with fast approaching deadlines, and this year is no exception. This year, not only that we had a fast approaching deadline, we also had news that we learned not too long ago from the California Department of Tax and Fees Administration, CDTFA, that caused us to switch gears from a budget that would be growing and expanding to reducing. And with all of the challenges and needed that needs to be done, we were able to do that in less than a month. So, the process normally takes months, if not years, to complete. Again, I want to give another shout out to the budget team and also staff for us to be able to take what we have learned into council for consideration today. Next slide. So, before us tonight for the council, the study session has three objectives. One is to walk you through what we have put together in a city manager's proposed budget. Wanted to emphasize that the budget before you is a planning tool, and the department directors and I work very closely on bringing the budget up to the transactional detail. However, tonight, we will be going over at a very high level in terms of how the budget and the impacts will have to the community. We will focus on the big picture impacts and trying to avoid any of the minor details. As we mentioned to you last night, council will have an opportunity to review the quarterly update in November and subsequently in 2024 and in a quarterly review. After the presentation, we're also here to receive comments and questions from the council and the members of the public, and hopefully that we can take those directions and feedback from council and to come back on the subsequent meeting on June sixth, so therefore council to adopt our budget, so this can go into effect by next fiscal year in July. Next slide. So, what are some of the things that we were looking at when we're putting this budget together? Typically, what we will always wanted to emphasize is that how do we put our budget and build on a solid foundation? We have been very lucky to have a very strong fiscal foundation to get us to where we are. Even with the challenges that are ahead of us, we have been fortunate to have some assurance to be able to carry us to the next decade or so. With that said, we can't forget COVID. So, what does the new normal look like? What does that mean in terms of our fiscal impact? In addition to how do we balance our multiple priority that is before the council, for the community, and also for the department and also myself to look at our operational needs? And to that, we are here to redefine what is essential. We have been doing above and beyond for a lot of operational services. This is a critical time for the city staff and also myself to bring the city team back and to present to city council, what do we mean by what is the essential? So, tonight, we'll be going a lot of, going over a lot of the details on what we believe is the essential operation for the city to continue on. Next slide. So, one might must wonder, how do we get to where we are today? This is not an easy task. So, the budget team actually started this process back in December, before the holiday. Director Alfaro and Manager Leon has been sending out emails to staff to start preparing for budget. Month go by, we start putting the proposal together. That comes around January, March. Just when we think that we have a framework put together, guess what? We learned from the CDTFA news that we're going to be taking a different turn in March. Do you want to kind of put the note and emphasize the note that we have put on the chart, which took us in a very different direction when we're putting our budget together? Fast forward a month later, we were able to quickly check in with all department heads, also department staff, to come back and learning from what we learned from CDTFA to put the proposed budget together. Here we are, second, special meeting, second week of May. We're presenting the proposed budget to you. Also, want to emphasize and thank council members for taking time from your busy schedules to meet with the staff to understand detail of each of the budget. We understand that hopefully this will be able to alleviate some of the concerns and questions, and we do really appreciate council members taking extra time to meet with us. Next slide. So, with all that said and done, how does the member of the public access our budget? There are three ways that we have put this proposed budget and also the past budget on our website. So, the members of public or anyone can access our budget on our city website, Cupertino.org/budget. We also have a very productive and also interactive financial transparency portal that the city staff has put together in the past years. This not only includes the current proposed budget and also, but also the budgets from past years. So, if anybody is interested in comparing how the Cupertino budget has been developed and analyzed, then this will be a great tool. In addition to a residential tax calculator and a budget forecast tool that you can also find on the website above. All of these tools will help council members, staff, and especially members of the public to understand and to evaluate our proposed budget. Next slide, thank you. So, what have we been working on? So, we understand that we have an operation to carry out, and we have responsibility and obligations to fulfill the needs for the residents and also to carry out policies for council. How do we know that we, what we're proposing in the proposed budget aligns with the community's desire? So, the budget team went out and did a community budget survey and a number of outreach events. So, we'll go over the results, but I'm proud to say that what we have proposing the budget today aligns with the results from the budget survey. Next slide. Not only the budget team, but many members of the city team attended a number of engagements at Cherry Blossom Festival, Farmer's Market, Earth Day, you name it, you'll find us in our Budget Bite t-shirt at a booth and trying to answer those questions. And we also had a survey provided for anyone who's interested to stop at the booth to help us to understand what really is the priority from the resident's standpoint. Next slide. So, the survey, sorry, the preview, there you go. So, the survey started towards the end of April before the budget was printed and made it available on the fifth of May. And it's continuing through the end of May to continue to collect feedback from the public. So far, as of half an hour ago, oh, I'm sorry, a day ago from yesterday, we have received 727 responses. And so, and this is an overwhelming receive of the feedbacks from the community. Next slide. So, what did we ask the community? We were given, oh, so the community was given 10 dots to allocate to the list of services that the city should reduce funding for, indicating how many dots that you would assign and potentially just to kind of in a way to tell staff what is the highest priority if you were to make these reduction yourself. So, the community members were given these exercise, providing instruction by the budget team at each event. And together through these 700 some responses. Next slide, please. We learned that the majority of the community would like to reduce funding supported for citywide events. And the second highest priority is to reduce funding on the recreational classes. These does not specify which classes, which event, but this gives enough direction and also aligns with staff's proposed budget in terms of how we will balancing, how we're proposed to balance the budget for next year. Next slide. We also asked the community, what do you not want to cut? And overwhelmingly, public safety, the environment where we feel secure at home, law enforcement is one thing that the community feels strong to keep a strong support, and also our street maintenance. The community felt that the second priority to have continuous funding to provide for that services will be on our street. Looking at the chart, again, we see the same responses of perhaps not as much funding provided for recreational class and also citywide events. Next slide. So, we've gone through the exercise of what would the community want to see cut? Where do you want to see the programs to be kept? We also asked the community, what do you think are the good ideas to help the city to get back to where we are? How do we get more revenue to our general fund? So, of the three proposals, and yes, we understand that there might be more, but of the three proposals, one is to potentially increase our taxes. Second is to increase the overall fees. And the third is to sell off some of the city-owned properties. This chart shows you the community priority aligns, again, with the staff proposal is to increase the citywide fees. And again, which fee will be increased? Which fees will remain at the certain level? As we mentioned to council, we will be coming back to council for two fees increase later on this year. In the summertime, we'll be coming back to realign our fee per the CPI for a small adjustment. And then, we will be launching to do a reassessment of a current city fee and let the consultant provide recommendation to council to consider raising fees for some of the essential area to continuous, to continue our operation. So, with that, before I dive into the numbers, I'm going to turn the floors to the budget team Director Alfaro and Manager Leon to walk you through the more detailed portion of the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. And I'll be taking you through the agenda for this evening. But before I do, I want to echo the city manager's comments on commending our staff for their efforts. It has been many a late night and weekends to get us to this point, and I want to thank the entire city team for their commitment and effort. We will begin with the proposed budget overview that looks at the budget in its entirety across all funds. Then, we'll focus on the city's general fund, which is the city's largest fund that is primarily tax-supported and where the city has the most discretion for how to spend those dollars. Then, I will hand the presentation off to Budget Manager Liang to take you through the general fund forecast and all fund summary. That will be followed by department directors presenting their budgets, city work program, and CIP overview, and finally wrapping up with issues and challenges and next steps. As you can see, we have a lot to cover. In fact, this presentation in its entirety is just over 80 slides. We will move through the slides expeditiously and will spend less time on slides you may have already seen. As always, this is a high-level presentation, and additional detail can be found in the budget document. I wanted to start by saying that I've been presenting the budget for most of my 10-year career here with the city of Cupertino. And one constant I can share with you is that during those years, is that probably and more than likely, every budget I have been, I have presented to you has been wrong. And I say that because we've generally underspent expenditures and underestimated revenues, all of which have led to higher fund balance or savings at the end of the fiscal year. I said, I've said to you often of the final budget, that book is outdated many times before it is even printed. It is really a point-in-time document. And although being wrong might sound terrible and not great for a director to admit publicly, a budget is really a planning tool, and being wrong is really right. We do our best with the information at a point in time and come to come up with estimates, and then, when we know more, we make adjustments. As City Manager Wu mentioned, that we will come back to you with those adjustments as part of the quarterly reports or another staff report. And then, also, as she mentioned, we start this process in December. So, as you can imagine, many of the assumptions we made six months before this gets adopted have to be revisited. As we jump into fiscal year 23-24 budget, know that the budget we'll be presenting to you this evening is our best estimate based on the information we know today of where we plan to be for the upcoming year, and it is really a starting point for our budget conversation. First, as I mentioned, we'll be focusing on all the, all the funds in the city's budget. And so, this is the financial overview by fund, covering all of the funds that the city has. The recommended proposed budget totals $117.8 million across all funds and is funded by $107.9 million in revenue, resulting in a decrease to fund balance across all funds of $9.9 million. This also excludes the capital improvement program that will be added as part of the final budget and presented to council later this evening. The largest fund is the general fund, recommended at $86.3 million and funded by $80.3 million in revenues, resulting in a decrease to fund balance of $6 million. Use of fund balance in the enterprise funds and internal service funds is due to those funds having sufficient fund balance and not requiring an additional subsidy from the general fund this year. In addition, the internal service funds also reflect the use of the 115 Other Post-Employment Benefits, or OPEB, trust to pay for retiree health costs. In addition, as part of last night's third-quarter report to council, the council approved covering the current fiscal year, fiscal year 22-23 retiree health costs with the trust as well. This will lead to further savings in the general fund for this year. Increases in special revenue funds are mostly related to BMR housing funds. In addition, I know this question came up last night, but all fund type descriptions and definitions are included in the proposed budget book, pages 88 to 91, under the Fund Structure heading. The next few slides will take you, we'll be focusing exclusively on the general fund for fiscal year 23-24. But again, before we jump in, I want to point out that this presentation, as is similar in the budget document, you will see a comparison to either the prior year adopted budget, so fiscal year 23 adopted budget, or the fiscal year 23-24 original budget. And this is a new term we haven't used in our budgeting before. The original budget was what the budget we had expected to be presenting to you prior to the news of the expected outcome of the CDTFA audit. It includes last year's base budget plus any ongoing adjustments approved by city council, along with CPI increases to materials and contracts, along with the addition of several new positions and various other budget requests. We will be sure to point out when we are comparing to which budget, just for clarity purposes, and try to walk you through if there's any changes from a prior presentation we may have given as well. So, focusing first on general fund revenue, you can see here, we're comparing fiscal year 23 adopted general fund revenues to fiscal year 24 proposed budget revenues. Overall, revenues are down $14.4 million, or 15%. And this is lower than what we presented on April 13th, and that's because we used the original budget to develop those reduced numbers. And we'll return to those numbers in this, later in this presentation just to give you that look back in case you forgot what those original numbers look like. Most categories in revenue show some growth with the exception of sales tax that has a significant decrease of $20.5 million. This next table shows you in a bit more detail the other categories that were lumped together in the previous chart. And again, it compares them to fiscal year 23 adopted budget. Here, again, we can see sales tax decrease along with some other categories, including other taxes. And this is due to the way we forecast this, which is based on a three-year historical trend for property transfers. Also, intergovernmental revenue is down due to a decrease in grant revenue. We also see increases in TOT as we're looking to return to about 75% of our historical high as we're recovering post-pandemic. Overall, though, revenue is down 15% from last year's adopted budget. Again, this is lower than was presented on the 13th, but we'll go over how those numbers are different in just a moment. General fund expenditures. Expenditures, again, we're comparing them to prior year fiscal year 23 adopted budget. Overall, we see that total expenditures are down 8.9 million, or 9% with the biggest decrease coming from transfers out and materials. We will discuss this in other categories in the next slide. So, here, it shows you in a little bit more detail, some of the, but some of the categories I want to call your attention to include that there's an increase in salary and benefits. And you might be thinking, if we're reducing positions in the budget, how can there be a decrease? And this is really because there was a cost, a 5% cost of living adjustment approved by council after budget adoption, though that would not have been included in the original numbers. There's also has been increase to our retirement cost as well as the addition of one position as part of the mid-year budget. So, all of those increases were offset by the decrease of the 14 positions in the current fiscal year. And then, also, as Budget Manager Liang will walk you through the assumption, there is also assumed growth in payroll per our CalPERS actuary. Materials and contracts are down due to budget reductions. These are offset by CPI or other contract terms. Large decreases in capital outlays and special projects are due to decreased one-time projects due to reduced available funding. And transfers out are down as well as the general fund subsidies have been reduced or eliminated in many of the other funds. The proposed budget update, this is the chart where we're going to take you through all the iterations we've shown you thus far. That first column shows you what the original budget was. The next column shows you what we presented to you on April 13th. And the final column shows you the proposed budget that we, you have before you this evening. We're going to go ahead and highlight a few numbers here. The first is 104.2 because that was the, what we had originally were going to have in the proposed budget that we planned to present to you prior to the news of the audit. However, with reduced revenues of $80.3 million, that meant we needed to cut about $23.9 million. That is just the difference between our original expenditures to what our new revenue reality is. In the next slide, we're going to illustrate how we met that reduction. This pie chart, pie chart shows how we closed the $23.9 million deficit. As you can see, the elimination of 14 existing positions coupled with removing 15 additional positions that had originally been requested saved $6.2 million. Reductions in materials made up an additional 1.8 and two, and contracts 2.7 million. Another large reduction area is transfers out at 5.8 million, and then, capital outlays and special projects at 1.4 million. That still left us about 6 million short, which we are recommending to use unassigned fund balance to cover. As Budget Manager Liang will discuss in the next, in the next, in his next slides, the budget is currently still structurally unbalanced with estimated ongoing expenditures exceeding ongoing revenues. However, staff anticipates adjusting this forecast as more information is known to put us back into a structurally balanced position prior to the end of the 10-year forecast period. But there is still some unknown impacts that we need clarity on before adjusting the forecast, which we will discuss later. All of this to say, the use of fund balance buys us time so we don't cut too deep if we don't have to and provides a soft landing for this ongoing transition. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Budget Manager Liang.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on the city's proposed budget. I'll be providing an update on the general fund forecast. It's important to note that this forecast is not set in stone but rather a planning tool that allows us to anticipate the long-term effects of budget decisions. We constantly update the forecasts as newest, new information is known or as assumptions change. We last provided an update on the forecast on April 13th. By providing regular updates based on the information available, we prefer, we hope to provide our city council and residents and staff with a clear understanding of the potential impact on the city and the measures we are taking to address the situation. Although we recognize that there are many unknowns regarding the CDTFA audit at this time, we remain committed to being transparent and sharing information as it becomes available. With that said, let's dive into the assumptions that inform our forecasts. Fortunately, our fiscal structure is strong with facility debt expected to be paid off by fiscal year 2029-2030. In addition, the city has proactively funded pension and retiree health costs using Section 115 trusts. It's also important to mention that the forecast does not include the ongoing impacts of new development projects until they have been built and occupied. However, revenue estimates for potential development projects have been included as a desk item. Lastly, the forecast assumes a recession every four years for all revenues. This assumption is based on historical business cycles, which typically last between four to five years on average. Although the timing of recessions is uncertain, these assumptions allow the city to forecast revenues conservatively. Based on the city's prior experience with recessions, revenues are projected to remain flat during these periods. This is also in line with what the city's investment manager, Chandler Asset Management, and sales tax consultant, HDL, are projecting for the next couple of years. Given the substantial uncertainty inherent in forecasting, we aim to be conservative in our revenue projections. Today, I'll focus on sales, property, and transient occupancy tax, or TOT, as they have the most uncertainty. The forecast does not assume the impact of any new development projects on sales, property, and TOT. Sales tax is projected to decrease by 73% or $30 million from the original forecast due to the CDTFA audit. And it is projected to increase by an average annual growth rate of 1.6% in the forecast. Property tax is projected to increase moderately with an average annual growth rate of 3.1%. And transient occupancy tax, which is levied on short-term stays in hotels, experienced a sharp decline in fiscal year 2020-21 and fiscal year 2021-22 due to pandemic-related restrictions on travel. However, with the gradual resumption of business, business travel, the tax has been showing signs of recovery. And in fiscal year 2023-24, TOT is projected to reach 7.5 million and increase moderately afterwards. Now, I'll move on to the expenditure assumptions. These are standard escalators. Department heads will go over the deep cuts to the expenditure categories that are proposed for the upcoming fiscal year. For salaries and benefits, the forecast assumes no cost-of-living adjustments or coalesced excluding the payroll growth forecasted by CalPERS as the city is currently in the process of labor negotiations with bargaining groups. Materials are projected to increase by the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. And contract services are also projected to increase by CPI except for the law enforcement contract, which is projected to increase by CPI plus 2% per the terms of the contract. The contract expires on June 30th, 2024, so we have included a placeholder starting in fiscal year 2024-25. Special projects were cut to one-half a million dollars in the out years of the forecast, which will potentially impact the ability to fund work program or other one-time items. And contingencies were also cut in half from 2.5% of materials and contracts to 1.25%. And transfers have also been reduced in the forecast to 7.5 million. Now, I'll go through the forecast. As Director Alfaro mentioned earlier, the CDTFA is currently auditing the sales tax allocations of one of the taxpayers in Cupertino. In light of this, our sales tax revenue projections are based on a worst-case scenario for the ongoing impact of the audit. It's important to emphasize that these projections are based on the information that we have today. They're merely a snapshot in time, and we will update the forecast as the situation evolves. The actual impact of the CDTFA's audit won't be known until they make an official determination with respect to the tax allocation, and that is expected in the next four to six months. This slide illustrates the significant challenge we face with the projected reduction in sales tax revenue tax revenue creating a structural deficit. A structural deficit is a situation where ongoing revenues are lower than ongoing expenditures, resulting in a long-term imbalance that cannot be resolved through simply temporary measures. However, despite these challenges, Cupertino's healthy reserves put us in a better position to weather these difficult times. To address the structural deficit caused by the projected drop in sales tax revenue and to give the city time to develop and implement a sustainable long-term plan, we have developed a strategy that utilizes general fund reserves. By using reserves, we aim to provide a soft landing and avoid more severe measures that could have a significant impact on essential services. We are committed to ensuring the city's financial stability while continuing to provide essential services to the community. This slide illustrates the impact on our fund balance over the next ten years. As you can see, we've been fortunate in the past to have a comfortable budget that has allowed us to be responsive to the needs and requests of our staff and residents. However, the depletion of our unassigned fund balance signals a need for us to be more strategic in our service delivery and to carefully consider where we can allocate resources and where we cannot. In recent years, fund balance has been built up due to high sales tax revenues, conservative budgeting, where we try to under-budget our revenues and try to budget for all potential expenditures, and also the elimination of mid-year transfers in recent years due to the potential impact of the CDTFA audit. Historically, the city has made significant transfers to the capital reserve at mid-year. And as a reminder, fund balance is built up at the end of a fiscal year when revenues are higher than expenditures, resulting in an increase in our fund balance or our reserves. To address revenue shortfalls over the next ten years, we anticipate using our unassigned fund balance and our capital projects reserve and also part of a Section one-fifteen pension trust. Our economic uncertainty reserve at twenty-four million is expected to remain intact, which will help us weather any economic downturns, revenue shortfalls, or emergencies. I would now like to discuss the city's staffing levels and the steps we are taking to balance our budget. As you know, one of the most significant components of our budget is staffing. Unfortunately, we are facing a revenue shortfall that requires us to reduce our staffing. We have developed a plan to gradually reduce our staffing through the elimination of vacant positions over the next ten years. Vacant positions are roles that are currently unfilled due to a resignation, retirement, or never being filled in the first place. We anticipate reducing our staffing by fifteen FTE this year through vacancies and then eliminating three to four vacant positions each year until we reach a staffing level of one hundred and eighty FTE, as you see with the red line, which is equivalent to the levels in fiscal year twenty-fifteen, sixteen. We understand that reducing staffing will be challenging and may lead to the elimination of some services, but we're committed to balancing our budget responsibly and continuing to provide essential services to the community. With that said, I'll now move on to the all-fund summary. So this chart shows all funds except the general fund. Total revenues are twenty-seven point six million and total expenditures are thirty-one point five million, resulting in the use of three point nine million in fund balance. And Director Alfaro earlier discussed, you know, the reasons for the decrease in fund balance for enterprise and internal service funds. This slide compares this year's proposed budget with last year's adopted budget for all funds except the general fund. First, compensation and benefits are rising due to the cost of living adjustment approved by city council in August twenty-two-two. Materials and contract services are decreasing due to expenditure reductions that the department heads will discuss in greater detail. Special projects are decreasing due to fewer city work program projects and fewer budget requests that were approved by the city manager. And contingencies are decreasing as they've been cut in half to one point two five percent of materials and contract services. In total, expenditures are decreasing by four million or eleven percent. Now I'll move on to discussing the proposed budget requests. So the proposed budget starts with a foundational level of funding, which is outlined in the base budget. Any funding that exceeds the base budget, whether it is for one-time or ongoing expenses, requires approval and review by the city manager. These budget requests are budgeted in special project accounts in order to improve transparency as well as to allow better tracking and trend analysis. Collectively, we're proposing budget requests totaling five point three million across all funds, which we will review in later detail, in greater detail during the presentation, and present them for city council's consideration. As you can see, we have two point one million in one-time requests and three point two million in ongoing requests for a total of five point three million. And this slide displays the proposed budget requests categorized by department. As we proceed through each department, department heads will go into greater detail. Now I'll hand it over to Assistant City Manager Morley to discuss the council and commissions budget.
Thank you, Thomas. So I have the city manager's office and the city administration and the council and commissions to bring to you tonight. I wanted to start by talking a little bit about the balance that we need to achieve in continuing the business of the city, at the same time, in the light of making cuts and reductions, and how important it is to consider both as we're making our proposals and our cuts. So the city needs to go on, that means we'll continue to spend money, and we'll continue to hire staff as needed to continue to support that work. For the council and commissions, we are seeing a reduction in our budget, as you see on the slide, and there are no budget additions proposed. We are recommending community funding reductions. The current proposed funding for next fiscal year is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Our reduction would bring that down to twenty-four thousand five hundred, and that would mean reductions to each of the, each of the organizations that would receive funding from the city. We would also see, and you'll see this sort of theme throughout all of the presentations, we'll talk about contracts and material reductions. That's really where we focused, in where we can cut our non-essential expenditures and still maintain that level of service that we need, although, as you'll see, there are definitely impacts to the community and to staff. We'll see in council and commissions, reduced expenses for food at meetings, in conference expenditures, our ability to attend conferences and conferences and receive trainings, and reapportionment of how technology is budgeted. Some of the detailed impacts, I won't cover all of these, but I'll give you some highlights. The mayor's fund will reduce from fifteen thousand to ten thousand dollars a year. We will reduce community funding by eight thousand dollars, as I highlighted already, and we'll also remove some other funding for public safety forum expenditures, for commission dinners and conferences, for a school waste audit, things that are impactful to the community but don't reach that new definition of essential. In the world of our administration, our city manager's office, our city clerk, and our city attorney's office, we as well will see a twenty percent reduction. We do have two city work program projects within the city manager's office that we will be working on this current fiscal year. A similar theme that you'll see across many departments, reductions in supplies and training. We don't believe this is sustainable. We need to continue to invest in our staff and our employees so that they have that training and can gain that expertise over time. However, for the first year, these are core to our budget balancing strategy. We also see a reduction in the city manager's contingency that will go from a current funding level of seventy-five thousand to fifty thousand, and reduction in many of the events that the city supports, such as the Crest Awards and the State of the City. Each department has a target for staffing reductions. For the city manager's office, that is two full-time employees. We are proposing the cut of an assistant city manager position and a communications analyst position, both of which are vacant. And we do have a special project. We are requesting additional one-time funding of ten thousand dollars for public safety, and that was one of the work program items that was funded last year, and we need a few extra dollars to complete that project, so it's proposed for an addition this year. In the area of law enforcement, we have a structured contract that is, that we're under currently with the sheriff's office. We have budgeted in that cost increase, but we are beginning, as of this week, negotiations with the sheriff's department for a new contract that would take effect in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. That completes that section for the manager's office and council and commissions, and I'll turn it over to Bill for innovation and technology.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. It's my pleasure to talk to you today about innovation and technology and what we're going to be doing moving forward. So on the first slide, you can see we have an overall cut of about five point four percent. We will have one point five individuals, mostly from the video department, moving over into information technology. And we have a request for infrastructure and application enhancements, and we'll be talking about that in just a second. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm clicking. I'm clicking. Put it the wrong way. There we go. All right, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this slide. So we were asked to come up with forty percent cuts in materials and twenty percent in contract services. And what you can see above you is what we're doing today. You know, what we're planning for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four. You can see the numbers there. I'll talk to you a little bit more in detail on the next slide. So what you're going to see with the impacts is reduced professional development and opportunities, clearly from an IT perspective, as well as with the rest of the city. We're going to continue to learn and progress, however, we would just do it at a different level. So for us, we're going to be doing more train the trainer, sending one person to education and then training the rest of the team instead of having a couple of guys going. Tech refresh cycles. So every piece of hardware we have, whether that's a laptop, an access point for Wi-Fi, or a server or storage element, has a tech refresh cycle on that. It's normally measured in years. We're going to be adding a year to each element that we have. Reduced wide-area network links. So we have links going out. This is the redundancy. So BlackBerry Farm, BlackBerry Golf, Montevista, those are examples. So we have fault tolerance built into those systems using a second carrier. In some cases, we're going to reduce that so that it limits the fault tolerance. We feel comfortable in doing that, simply because we've moved our services to a better provider, and we've, over the last year and a half, have had very little disruption in service. And then the final one is reduced outside support. So we have highly technical applications that we utilize, requires a highly technical staff. The last three to four years, we've been building up our staff to be able to support those internally. We now feel comfortable that we can reduce the numbers of that. What's the community impact? Well, we do a lot of pilot projects within the city. A couple of examples of those are traffic, adaptive traffic signaling, which helps traffic flow through the organization and through the city. Augmented reality, we've done an art tour, which I hope all of you have done, downloaded to your phone and actually done the tour. We have virtual reality that we're utilizing in the senior center today, and it was well-received in the recent product. And then we have a few others. So we'll be reducing those. However, if council has some that they want to do, we'll absolutely receive those, assuming you give us the funding. The next one is, over the last couple of years, we've been expanding Wi-Fi into city parks. We currently have three to four parks that have Wi-Fi service today. We will not be expanding that any further, so we're going to stop with what we currently So staffing, as Matt said, we are making some reductions. For us, it's a, one of the infrastructure manager, well, not the infrastructure manager, one of the IT managers, and this is due to a retirement that's going to be happening within our group. Special projects, so these are things, as Matt said, we still need to continue forward. There's things that we have to continue doing, right? And for us, we have three projects coming forward. One of them is the replacement of our financial and HR system, which is an enterprise resource planning system. So we are in phase one now, which is needs assessment. Phase two is an RFP development, which will happen in the summertime. Phase three is actually the procurement and implementation of a system, so we're asking to move forward with that. Also, we have a project, an application called Project Docs, which is our plan review, which the planning folks use for plan review, obviously. We're kind of stuck on this one that we have to. The software vendor is now forcing us to go to the cloud because no further enhancements will be happening on-prem. And what that means to us is security holes. So that means you go, go cloud or open yourself up to some security risk. And then the final one is we have a virtual reality decarb application. It's a one-time, but one of the things to mention on this is we do have a grant that covers us one hundred percent. And this is going to be working with Andre's Group in sustainability. And then with that, I'll turn it over to Director Alfaro.
Thank you, Bill. The table, oops, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Administrative Services budget experienced a slight increase from the fiscal year twenty-four budget. This is primarily due to the cost of insurance, contracts, and compensated absences that cannot be, I felt like noise being loud, sorry, thank you, that cannot be reduced. That's why you don't see a sharper reduction in our budget. However, and we also don't have any budget request. However, the table here shows you how we were able to reduce two hundred and nine thousand from our budget in materials and contracts, and provides a high-level description of the impacts they will have to our department. The next slide here shows you in a little greater detail what those impacts look like. I'll only touch on a few of these. Really, we, our department also has human resources, so we're going to be seeing a reduction in citywide training, also potentially a reduction to our internal audit budget. We've, Moss Adams, who's our current vendor, we've asked them to produce a reduced work plan for next fiscal year, aligning with our contract reduction targets, and also looking to combine, we have two citywide events, one for years of service and one for a holiday party into one event. For community impacts, we're going to be doing reduced printing of our budget, budget at a glance, and our annual comprehensive financial report. For administrative services, where our, our target was one position, and we will be eliminating a vacant administrative assistant position. With that, I'll turn it over to Rochelle Sanders to cover Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, City Council. Rochelle Sanders, Director of Parks and Recreation. The Parks and Recreation Department is proposing a budget decrease of eight point six percent from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget, and a request for two city work program projects. The reductions include part-time staffing department-wide, materials and contract services, and a reduction of a little over one point one million dollars. The internal and community impacts include reducing some of our marketing, social media ads, merging some of our publications, making our rec brochure smaller, expansion, reducing the expansion of any new offerings or programs, classes or camps, and reducing the funding on some of our events that you can see here. It also includes the removal of any extra office hours at appropriate buildings, and some free events, not all, you can see some of the ones here, and the budget to cover festival fees. Parks and Recreation proposes to eliminate two full-time staff employee positions, our recreation manager position that is currently vacant, and our community outreach specialist position, which is also currently vacant. We also are going to delay filling any vacancies when possible and cutting our part-time staff budget to the absolute minimum levels to continue doing what we are doing. As stated previously, there are two special projects that will be elaborated on a little later in the meeting. Staff also proposes to remove the city-paid expenses for festivals, which are the two blue columns you see in this slide, and removing fees waived are, of course, at council's discretion, and the fees waived are the orange sections of this slide. And I will now hand it over to Ben Fu.
Thank you, Rochelle. Good afternoon, council members and Madam Mayor, Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about CDD's budget this year. As you can see, even though we have efforts to reduce the budget, you will see an increase about one point three percent to our budget from last year, and that's due to compensation benefits and also slight increase in some of our contract services. As you know, we receive revenue through permit fees and impact fees. As you know, we receive revenue through permit fees and impact fees, so as we see an uptake on permit received, that's going to be a slight uptake on the contract services to help review and process those applications as well. We do have two city work program items that's going to require a little bit of budget request, and that's why you see a slight uptake. Our efforts in reduction for the budget, looking at consolidation of our conference attendance and professional development opportunities, as we come out of the pandemic, we realize that there's a lot of virtual options for our professional development opportunities, so we're going to look to take advantage of that. We do have a wide range of talents and specialties in our departments, whether it's planners and engineers, plan checkers, permit techs, inspectors, and code enforcement officers and others. So it's important for us to keep their training up to date, to maintain their licenses and certificates. We'll also be terminating some of the on-call, on-call contracts as well as negotiating, the new contracts are expiring, also renegotiating contracts that are expiring to help us reduce some of the, some of the costs, but that will, of course, have some impact to the services that we provide to the public, so that'll impact some of our permit review time as well as our response to inquiries that we receive, whether through 3-on-1 emails, phone calls to our department with a public counter. This year, we proposed elimination of three FTEs. We have office assistant, senior housing planner, and also through some consolidation efforts of roles and responsibilities, we'll be able to remove one manager vacancy as well. As of now, we have total 13 vacancies out of 38 bodies, FTEs. Moving forward, we will be evaluating priorities and timing of each of those recruitments so we don't sort of flood the process all at once. We have three recruitments currently ongoing, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to fill those positions in the next four weeks or so. Special projects will be discussed a little bit later in this presentation, but you see the two items that we have and the amount that we're requesting as part of the review, whether it's potential for consultants or outreach efforts. Thank you. With that, I will hand off to Director Mosley.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Chad Mosley, interim Director of Public Works. And as can be seen from this slide here, the Public Works Department is proposing a budget decrease of more than $1.3 million below the budget adopted in fiscal year '22-'23. We do have some requests to enable us to complete city work plan projects and some special projects. The Public Works Department has made reductions throughout the department, including what other departments have done as well, which, which include some professional development. It also includes various materials and contracts as well as reductions in our pavement projects. I would like to note that a large portion of the materials costs shown here are for utilities that the city utilizes, including water, electricity, sewer, gas. The city, as well as everyone here and listening in today, has experienced relatively significant rate increases in utilities, and those increases are reflected here. With that stated, we are looking for opportunities to reduce overall usage where feasible. The impacts to the city and community are many and varied, but include services such as reductions in frequency of janitorial cleaning services for most of the city facilities. We're planning to stop certain services, such as the spring goose control services at Memorial Park and others, and we plan to reduce the use of city funds for concrete and pavement maintenance. These reductions are anticipated to result in a lower pavement condition index for the city, which means less pristine roads, but we're, we're doing well now, so we've got a little bit of room to flex on that. For staffing, the department has proposed the elimination of five full-time employee positions. We also plan to delay filling other vacancies for the foreseeable future, resulting in a reduction of six positions overall within the department by July 1st of this year. So we're, we're going to be seeing savings right off the bat. And then for special projects, we do have a modest request. You know, the first two projects shown here, which are large, are the city's ongoing pavement maintenance projects, and it should be noted that a significant portion of these funds are provided from external sources such as Measure B and SB 1. So another one, the HHW and paint care, we have an existing fund that is restricted for use on household hazardous wastes, so we are, this, the, the amount shown here is being pulled from that restricted fund, it's not coming from the general fund. And with that, I'll hand it off to Thomas. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The non-departmental category encompasses the city's debt service payments for city facilities as well as transfers from the general fund to other funds. The non-departmental budget is decreasing, primarily due to reduced transfers to other funds. These reductions stem from expenditure reductions in the special revenue funds, in the enterprise funds, and in the internal service funds. Additionally, transfers to fund capital projects have also been eliminated in this year's The city's proposed budget document is typically printed during the first week of May each year, allowing sufficient time for the public and city council to review its contents. To meet this printing deadline, any changes made after a specific date or after the document's printing date are not included in the printed budget. Instead, these changes are presented to city council as part of the study session or the final budget hearing and adoption session. One such change pertains to the revenue generated from festivals. As Parks and Recreation is recommending that festival organizers pay fees that were previously waived, or that were waived in previous fiscal years. If approved, this adjustment is estimated to increase revenue by $84,218, and the festival fee waivers table has been included as a desk item. In addition, the city manager's office is requesting to reclassify the emergency services manager as an assistant to the city manager. If approved, this reclassification will result in an increase in expenditures of $25,360. Now, I'll hand it over to Assistant City Manager Morley to discuss the city work program.
True to the city work program, since we spent so much time going through it earlier this year, you'll see in the budget document that we've broken it out and presented it in a little different way. We've got this current year's work program items and then a number, or an increased number of items in next fiscal year's work program. The idea there was to really structure a more limited approach and a more limited funding approach this current year, so the total work program for this year is $215,000. You'll see on, thank you, Thomas, you'll see on this table that there are some projects that were funded in last year's work program, and the funding in, is carried over in the next to last column to the right, and additional dollar requests are in the final column for this current fiscal year. So you can, on this slide, you can see that the final additional recommended funding for the upcoming fiscal year is that, that $215,000 that I referenced. It was important to us to remain true to the list that the council had reviewed previously, and with that, the 2024-2025 list is fairly substantial and has a fairly large dollar amount. We anticipate bringing this back to the council in the early part of next calendar year to revisit. As we, we noted earlier, it's a two-year work program, so these would be the projects that we would take on next year, and depending on how the budget is shaping for next fiscal year, we would propose revisions to the work program at that point and have that conversation with the council in our annual work program discussion. And with that, I'll turn it over to our capital improvement program folks.
I forgot that I was coming back up. So we have our capital improvement program. Let's go to the next slide here. Earlier this year, we brought to you six new projects that we were hoping to push forward. This was, of course, before we, you know, hit the, the budget woes that we're at now. We've reduced that down to two, which are, you know, projects that we really want to move forward, the Stevens Creek, Calabasas Creek Storm Brain Repair Project, again, that's a safety project, so we want to kind of move that forward. And then we have the Stevens Creek Bridge Repair Project. This is also backed by a considerable amount of federal funds, so we're pushing these forward. The others have dropped off, and we'll be looking at opportunities to bring those forward in the future. And then we have some existing projects where we're looking to continue funding for them, our annual streetlight installation, where we basically go in and install streetlights where residents request. We have our annual playground replacement projects, and these funds here are to support a significant grant that the city got for replacement of playgrounds. We received $450,000 in grant monies to replace three playgrounds, so these are to, to match those funds, which is a requirement of the grant. ADA improvements, which is an ongoing issue, we want to try and be compliant with ADA requirements. And then our citywide building condition assessment implementation, many of the city's facilities are in need of repairs, upgrades, you know, alarms, other safety issues. We had brought this earlier this year and had requested 2 million. We've reduced this quite a bit to, to address that. And so these are the projects that we are requesting this year, again, a fairly modest ask for, for CIP.
Home stretch of the presentation here, just a few more slides to go. We want to cover issues and challenges, so right at the top there is the impact from the CDTFA sales tax audit. Again, as Budget Manager Liang mentioned, we should be expecting to receive that within four to six months. The other thing is our capital project funding. Also, as Budget Manager Liang mentioned, we have removed the $2.5 million annual transfer to the capital reserve, so effectively, the balance they currently have in that fund is what they have to spend over the next 10 years, and giving the city's aging infrastructure, that's not going to be sustainable, and we're going to have to figure out a way to fund these projects. In addition, as labor negotiations, we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that we don't have cost of living adjustments built in. We do have the placeholder for a CalPERS growth in payroll, but in order to recruit and retain staff, we will need to figure out what we can do in terms of labor negotiation to stay competitive in the labor market. A law enforcement cost was also mentioned, as we'll be renegotiating the contract with the sheriff's office. It is the largest component of our contract cost. And reduced staffing, as we already mentioned, reducing 14 positions this budget, three to four in the forecast. How do we continue city operations? How do city operations change with that reduced staffing? Staffing reductions, this is just meant to show you all in one location, the 14 positions that are being recommended, recommended, recommended to be reduced. And with that, just real quick, next steps we want to cover, we were here last night giving a presentation on the third quarter financial report. The orange dot is where we are this evening, the proposed budget study session. We'll be back tomorrow with the community budget town hall, and then back again on June 6th for the final budget hearing and adoption, and that, then back on November 2023 to give you our first quarter financial report update. This covers how we ended the previous fiscal year and lets you know how we're doing in the first three months of the current fiscal year. With that, that concludes the presentation, and staff is available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to thank City Manager Wu and our finance team and all the directors for your diligence and really good analysis, so we cannot do this without your professionalism and your expertise. So thank you very much. And second, I'd like to establish some grounds that before we go into questions, discussions, and public input, I want to refer back to our City Council Procedures Manual that we passed early this year, and especially point to 1.2, values. Courtesy and respect for individual points of view should be practiced at all times. We are here to work together in a challenging time, but as Administrative Director Alfaro says, this is challenging, but two, every one of us, a challenging means opportunities. So this is opportunities for staff and council and public to work together, but we, one thing we really need to pay attention is to show respect and courtesy to each other. And second, I would like everyone to keep an open mind. Yes, we always think that we studied thoroughly and our proposals, our points of view might be really good, but listen carefully what other people's reasons and strategies, why are they proposing what they propose? Make note of it and keep an open mind. Third, emphasize your focus. Why are we doing this? Why do you propose this? What is your focus? And I do believe we have different focuses, that's why we have different proposals, so refrain from using negative comments and really focus on why you believe what you do. So I'd like everyone to really work together, this is a challenging time for our city, but also an exciting time, because I, I figure this is like doing a risk management assessment for our city, and we have so many opportunities and we have so many decisions we, we have to make. Every decision has impact and has its consequences, but if we keep in mind that we are here doing together to keep our day-to-day service to our residents, to make sure our city is well-run, but also to look into the future and look for opportunities and be open-minded of what we can do together, I think we can have really good session today and tomorrow and really put our city in a really great track. So I hope everyone, we show courtesy and respect, be open-minded, and really focus on what we should do in the future. So thank you. Now I'm going to open up for questions from council, and before we go to public comment. Do we have lights from the council to ask questions? Councilmember, if not, I actually have two questions. Can I ask first? Okay, so back to the community funding slide, it's 30 to 500 is proposed by the Park and Recreation Commission this time, and the proposal is to reduce it by 20% to 24,500. But what was our original funding last year? I remember it was around 65,000 or 69,000? Oh, yeah. Park and Recreation Director Rochelle is here.
So I don't know the exact total. Christina might be able to find it, but I believe it was around 68, and your funding range is 70 to 90 in the policy.
Right. So to me, 30 to 500 proposed by Park and Recreation Commission is already a 50% reduction from last year's. So I'm a little concerned, reduce it more. So that's one of my questions. I would like to honor Park and Recreation's request. That's just my personal view, so thank you for, don't go away, Rochelle, I think my next question is yours too. So Shakespeare in the Park, I understand we, we'll cut the funding, but we'll work with them to make sure it goes forward and with fundraising or, you know, support from the community. What if the fundraisers are not successful as it is? Will we be able to say we, we have a little budget to make up for it, to make sure we have Shakespeare in the Park in the summer? It really is a very important program for our community, and I heard a lot of feedbacks, people really love it, go out there in the summer and, you know, sit together and enjoy this. So do we, is it possible we can have some backup funding for that?
So at this time, what I know is that we've been working with Toby, and she has told us that they have done funding in the past for other cities and that they've been working on funding for us for this year. I don't know if you want to go into anything, Matt, but if we did take the funding away, there isn't funding sitting there to add to it for later.
Right, so my, my, maybe proposals have a backup funding.
So do, Mayor, so we definitely will be working with the organizer and the vendor to figure out a way to continue the event. This may not be a completely city-funded event, but we'll continue to, to work on that effort.
All right, thank you. So that's my two questions for now.
If I could just add to that briefly, Mayor, that we, we expect that with the deep cuts that we're making this year, that there'll be needs to come back to the council over the course of the year to make corrections where we may, maybe corrected, corrected too much, cut too much. So these, these might be circumstances, individual circumstances, but there certainly may be others across the year, and we would use the quarterly or the mid-year updates to, to bring that information to you and those requests.
So thank you. So I think I sort of heard from City Manager Wu that the program will be, will be on for this summer.
We're going to continue to strive for that.
Thank you. Would like to push the button and, and I'll call you. Councilmember Foo, please.
All right, so Rochelle, could I grab you again? Sorry. You'll get your steps in here today. There was an email that was sent earlier today from There was an email that was sent earlier today from Carol Stannick, who is the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. And one of the questions that she had was with respect to the proposal for how to distribute the the cuts for the community funding. Can you elaborate a little on what your perspective is there?
Honestly, she went through, I think she did a very good job of of emailing what they were thinking. At the end of the meeting, they did make sure that they ranked the way that they wanted the actual organizations to be funded. For the purpose of, in the past, we haven't always funded exactly what Parks and Recreation has brought forward. So if you look at their actual ranking that she has listed, that's what Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation is to you.
Okay, because I think that one of the things that that she had raised and is perhaps getting lost in the the email was that there was a concern that a number of the organizations are asking for that money in a, you know, with a plan for where that that's going to go. So they've already pre-planned based upon what they've asked for. And I think that her intention was, and the commission's intention was, from having watched that that commission meeting, was that we would just cut the actual, say, bottom recipient and move all the way up to the top as you needed to in order to be able to fulfill the request.
Yes. So it's been done in more than one way in the past. It really is up to council in the end. The groups do know via the application that they need to have external funding opportunities, not just our money. So there is a possibility of percentages if that's the way you would like to do it. But it does make it easier for the organizations if we were to just cut full organizations.
Yeah. Is there a way that you can provide us with like an alternative arrangement so that we can see it when we get the the final budget back in June? Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. And then I had a question for Director Foo.
Yes, sir.
You had mentioned a reduction in on-call services. And I was hoping that maybe you could elaborate on what sort of impacts those would create and what exactly those services are.
Sure. A couple of those, for example, would be graffiti cleanup or any sort of cleanup services that we may provide and coordinate with the Public Works Department.
And then you also provided us with, I thought it was a very helpful desk item that shows anticipated development revenues. Do you think that you could present on that, since I don't think you had the opportunity to do so?
Sure, be happy to. So this is a list of our estimated fees that we believe we'd be able to collect when the project comes in and go through the actual building permit review process. The top three rows for each project you see are tax increases. And then the following six are either permit fees or impact fees that we may be able to collect for each project. And this is our best case estimate based on what we know or don't know about the project in the supplemental time so far and approval time. So they're they're divided up into columns of of various years. And we we hope that they will be able to come in, of course, sooner the better. And so you have projects ranging from Apple VP1 that just came through council for approval a few weeks ago to residential project, mixed-use projects such as Canyon Crossing, Marina Plaza. I won't go into those numbers in detail, but that's what these these estimates are for, for these development projects that were approved by council. But we either have not received permits for or we have not received a complete package of permits for. And so you see projects, for example, Westport, you see some development happening. But we have not received all the permits for all the different types of units there yet. And that's why that project is there. Some projects, I believe, are incorporated into our budget discussion, but most of them are not just because we haven't had a chance to really get a good estimate from them or know when they may come back.
Got it. And these are, these are just projects that are effectively all in the pipeline or some stage of development right now, not things that are speculative like.
That's great. All these are projects that are approved by city council and we're waiting for building permits to come through.
That's correct. And then Manager Lung, if you could opine perhaps just very quickly on the methodology used for calculating what you expect the property tax to be?
Thank you, Councilmember Foo, for your question. So for property tax, we base estimates on increased value of the improvements, but not on an increased value of the land. In other words, we're assuming that the that there won't be any sales of these lands. It's just going to be the same owner. And so the increased value of the improvements is based on the number of bedrooms for residential properties. And for commercial properties like hotels, retail or office, we base it on the square footage and the price per square foot. And the average market values was based on Zillow data.
Good with your questions, Councilmember Foo?
Yeah, I mean, my my time has elapsed.
Actually, before I call Councilmember Moore, I want to just follow up with that question. I have two minutes. So if the property are offered for sale, then the property tax would increase its value because the land and sales would be counted together. Is that a good assumption?
Yes. So we're trying to be conservative, so we were assuming that it wouldn't be sold. Essentially, that these properties would have the same owner and so only the improvements would be reassessed.
Right. So if that's the case, if the properties are sold, then the property tax value would go up much more than you estimate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. More?
Thank you. And I don't want this to ding my time, but we should have the, an explanation about the the impact fees and what those are actually intended to be for and what the legal requirements are for the amount for those impact fees to be asked for. So basically, they're to solve the problems that the development causes. Okay, so we are supposed to each year look at the the law enforcement miscellaneous number, which is the donation from Apple for two sheriffs for Beat C5. And that's a little over $1 million. And we're, we are, according to the the meeting that was held in 2018 when this donation amount started, we're supposed to have a discussion about whether we want to be continuing with this particular allocation. And will that be coming to us at the at the June meeting?
So through the mayor, if I may, Councilmember Moore, thank you for your question. So I believe the donation was something that was contemplated back when Valco Park One was being developed. As Assistant City Manager Morley alluded to earlier, we have started a conversation with the sheriff's office on the new contract. So going forward, the transaction to document these activity will be included in the new contract. So this will not be included in the June final budget for you to consider this year.
With all due respect, it is in the budget under miscellaneous as over $1 million, but it does not specify what this money is for. And we were, the public was informed back in 2018 that each year we would be having a discussion about about this. So it actually is in the budget. So I do think we do need to discuss it. With regards to the community grant and the festival fees, I'm coming up with a total on sister cities of around a little over $135,000. And I would like to have that and any other waivers of facility use to be provided. I'm not able to to find that. So we've got, we've had other uses that are that are waived. Perhaps the the Chamber LAC is going to resume. I don't know if that's going to be budgeted. And there's a bingo waiver, I believe. And going back to the festival costs which we have here, they're, they're, to my knowledge, we haven't had a discussion about how to rank these, these festival waivers and some kind of comparison with the the cities around us because we're in a different financial situation. Has there been a study of like a combination showing our our festival waivers, our sister city waivers and the the facility waivers? Do we have a grand total of all of all of that together and some kind of a comparison with cities which are in in a situation such as ours where we're trying to cut so that so that we know that we're not continuing on spending that is essentially beyond our means as we move forward?
Through the mayor, if I may, so we've provided a festival fee waiver chart in your desk item. I believe that we're also bringing the sister city policy back for council to reconsider, to make adjustment later on in this year, which we could also clarify on what the used facility as part of the the funding that's provided by the city to sister city. That will not be part of the budget for your consideration today. So we can definitely provide those information to you on a separate matter to follow up.
Okay, so we're we're not really getting a complete picture then because we've got the sister cities. We've got staffing, it looks like, for sister cities, a little over about $73,000 within the budget. We have 18 free uses of of the city facilities. We have waivers, festival fee waivers of approximately, oh, about $41,000. And and then there's additional grants of a little over $5,000. So I I do think we, since we are looking at a comprehensive budget cut, need to know all of the places where that could happen and have a conversation about where, what our objectives are and if we want to continue on with these things, just at least put it out there so we can have a discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chow.
Thank you. I'm sharing my screen here. So, yeah, I agree that we are, so we are doing a comprehensive cut and I have requested the information on all the other community funding beyond the ones that we have here today. Here we are looking at 24,000 about among seven organizations. But we have, although I have been very supportive in providing Historical Society a stable funding since I got elected, but I feel I'm obligated to make sure that we look at all the funding to all communities as we consider cutting. So I have requested the city staff to please provide. I know of Historical Society is 40,000 for one organization. And 5,000 per sister city. I don't know if there are other similar funding that should be considered. And it's a three-year agreement, but I have checked with the city attorney that the city could make an adjustment with a 30-day notice. And so I wonder if the city staff could provide that information or have provided that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Chow, was that a question?
Community funding for all communities or other organizations beyond this seven that's being proposed. This is already a reduction, 50% reduction from normal, right? And it seems we need to be fair for all organizations. If some people, if we are reducing 50% here, it seems we should have better picture of all the other funding. So I'm wondering, can we have a visibility into other community funding, including sister city, Historical Society and other organizations? So we can consider them together. Do we have those?
Remind council that we did put together a website on most of these things. So it's got the community funding, it's got the bingo waiver that was approved by city council, Historical Society.
I am not asking for information on the website. I'm asking as part of the budget reduction discussion, we should be looking at all funding so we can consider them holistically together rather than cutting here, but don't even look at somewhere else. That seems to be.
I do understand that.
Not transparent, right?
I do understand that.
Fair to everyone.
I just want to make sure there is understanding that something like the Historical Society is an agreement. So if you did actually cancel that agreement, you're not just canceling the funding, you're canceling their museum space at Quinlan. And if we did want to renegotiate that, that would be separate from this budget item. It would need to be brought back to council as a separate item. So I just want to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. And then, yeah.
If I could just add to that, it's been mentioned just a few times in the presentation. We had a very quick turnaround to get to this reduced number. So before you tonight is kind of the best estimates we could come up and the easier cuts that we can make if we receive council direction that you would like us to look at further reductions in other areas. We can definitely do that.
Yeah, it's something I'm very reluctant to do. I know that history is very important. But seeing the community funding of only 24,000 among seven organizations, I kind of feel it, we are obligated to look at all. So maybe not right now, but then that's something we should consider in the next discussion. And another question is regarding staffing. It's really great that we won't have to lay off anyone and that will be the last thing we want to do. However, we do have 43 vacancies right now and we are only reducing 14. And thank you, the staff, for this historical staffing chart. That's really, really helpful to be part of the discussion. As we can see that there is a spike last year and the increase just one year was 22 positions. And now we are cutting only 14. So that means we are not even cutting to the year before. And then in 2020, 2021, we had 198. And if you look at 2014, 15, that was when I first got involved in city politics. I remember our budget was $75 million, our revenue. And this year, our projected revenue is about 80 million. So we are about the same level of revenue as 2014, 15. And that, the staffing level at that time is 149. Just therefore, I think the community has asked how, why we couldn't reduce more among the 43 vacancies. I know that staff has proposed to delay some of them, but why is there no ability to reduce more?
Through the mayor, if I may, again, so.
At least matching the last year, right?
Through the mayor, if I may, so as we alluded to earlier, this is a planning document looking forward. This is our best estimate. We will want to keep the the operation as smooth as possible. Therefore, we have not proposed to make such a dramatic cut to eliminate the current field position to what Councilmember Chow is proposing.
Of course, I'm not proposing to cut any of the field position, but I'm told there are 43 vacancies. And at least 22 positions were added last year. And so there is potential to, so the cut we have right now is, there's no reduction even from one year ago. So.
Thank you. So I got the questions.
Council?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chow has a chance. Vice Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wei. Just to follow up on Councilmember Chow's question about the vacant positions. Our immediate purpose today is to balance next year's budget. And I think I heard you say that for the next several years, there will be three or four positions that will be cut to to get to the pre-pandemic levels, maybe 2015. Is that correct? Okay, so so the 14 positions that we are eliminating are vacant positions for now. So no one's going to lose their job.
Correct.
And to get to a balanced budget for '23, '24, that is what we need. I'm assuming we we could cut more, but we need to cut what we need to cut, not not more, not less.
Correct. So we're trying to do a tempered approach so we're not having large-scale impacts to the community or to the programs or things we're already currently working on.
Okay. I also wanted to draw your attention to today's handout, page 22, where you've laid out, can we see that, the closing the 23.9 million deficit. So this is. So this is, this is your strategy in summation, is, am I right?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
This, this, this is your plan to close the twenty-three point nine million dollar deficit?
Correct, for the current year, for the upcoming fiscal year.
For the upcoming year, out of which the use of fund balance is six point six million. So that's the general fund balance, is that what it is?
Correct, unassigned fund balance and the general fund.
Okay, so if, if the budget was adopted and with no changes, at the end of this process, we would be reducing the general fund unassigned reserve by six million?
That would be our estimate. We'd have to wait till year-end actuals come in to understand the true impact of fund balance.
As of today, though.
Correct.
And that would be the only reserve that would be reduced?
There would be other reserves in the special funds, so in the internal service funds, enterprise funds, and special, because special revenue fund is adding revenue, but those are also using fund balance. And that's part of our, you can see in the one point, no, five point eight million, the reduction to other funds. And that's because the funds have either built up sufficient fund balance because their revenues have exceeded their expenditures in prior years.
Okay, so there's room to effect this move.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I could come back, we have other opportunities to ask specific questions.
Sure, but you still have two minutes to ask questions or if you want to do it now.
I had a question about the parks and rec, but maybe Director Alfaro, you can answer it or you can shout it out from there.
Come on up, Rasha.
All right, come on up.
Mayor, your mic is, mayor, your mic is not on.
All right, Rasha, come on up. I think you're needed here.
And I hate to do this because it's a very short question, but there's some, several of the events that are planned for reduction will happen quite soon, earlier on in the fiscal year, right? The Fourth of July. So those won't get affected for this year at all. So any cuts that we make to those, including Shakespeare in the Park, those, I'm assuming the planning is all set for those events and no cuts or changes will be made to those events which have already been planned for the next few months.
So Fourth of July, you're half right. So the fireworks contract does get signed very early, so the evening portion definitely will not change. The morning portion, we will be proposing to close Blackberry Farm pools on the Fourth. That will save us quite a bit in lifeguarding staffing costs. And we are going to cut some of what is happening at Quinlan. So the pancake breakfast will still happen, the flag raising, certain things that don't cost us very much money, but things like the bounce houses that cost quite a bit will be cut for this year.
And those are not locked into any contract.
Correct. And then Shakespeare, that one, the contract happens a lot later, so that one would be cut for this year. However, as we spoke about before, we will work toward making sure it still happens.
Okay, thank you. And one other question, in the Arts and Culture Commission, there was a contract amount and I couldn't quite figure out why the commission had a contract.
So I can answer that. So Arts and Culture is now under Community Development, but it was under Parks and Recreation. And there was a contract amount of ten thousand dollars for art in unexpected places. And so we are proposing to cut that program and that amount.
So is that, is that a contractor? Is there a person who's?
Yes, so basically what we did one year, because it was a pilot program, was chose a space and it's a wall out at Blackberry Farm. And the contractor is the artist that came out and did the artwork.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think every council member had a chance to ask questions, so I would like to open for public comment and come back to the council for discussions. So let's open up the public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have three blue speaker cards for people requesting to speak in Community Hall, and I see three hands raised on Zoom. We have Jennifer Griffin, Rota Frye, and Dave McElroy.
There's one more card.
Yes. Anyone wishing to speak, please have your hand raised or a speaker card submitted in the next nine minutes.
Is this, oh yeah, there we go. Good afternoon, city council, or evening. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and this is the twenty-third year. I've gone through one of these and I understand them more and more now. I think the staff did a really good job of trying to deal with the unexpected decrease in funds. It's not fun, but it's doable. I'm of a mind that we all survived COVID. We went through a lot of change. We learned how to deal with things. We had to stay home, we had to learn how to shop, we had to take care of seniors that were thirty miles away, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we can deal with this. I'm of a mind that we should not panic. First of all, we should not be selling real estate under any conditions. I am absolutely against that. To me, that is knee-jerk reaction. We can always remember, as you all said in this, the audit by, that is happening with Apple, with the big long name, is not going to be over till July. We can, once that has happened, we can always go back and ask for reconsideration from the audit from the state level. We have that, we always have that available. Everyone has the right to say, why is this happening? We don't have to be victims of things that happen. And I would never expect Cupertino to lay down and be a victim. I think I'm a big proponent of, if you have staff members that are potentially looking at vacant positions or they're down the road, something being cut, retrain them, cross-train them. I have worked in public and private sector, and I said before, three startup companies, several of the startup companies had from eleven to forty people. You can understand they had to cross-train. This is also an excellent time that if you have employees in certain areas who are interested in going into different departments, if you want to pull more people into IT, into computer science, et cetera, section, pull them in from other departments and train, mentor, hands-on. This is exactly what you do. You train the people there. Yes, it's expensive. I have actually been to Unix System Administration training classes at SGI, et cetera, et cetera. We're talking about five thousand dollars. Okay, we don't have the money to do that. You can mentor in-house. And I propose that we do that. This is excellent time for the staff to think, what do they want to be doing three to five years from now? Do you want to move departments? Thank you.
Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Dave McElroy, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Rota.
Hi. In my opinion, the budget is not proposing a soft landing. It's more like landing on a feather bed rather than a futon. To balance the budget, we're looking at dipping into savings for over a decade. This is not okay. Good, you got my overhead? Thank you very much. So this presentation needs to compare the twenty-twenty-two actuals with the proposed twenty-twenty-four budget instead of comparing with the twenty-twenty-three. And so if you compare it that way, if you go and look in the budget, we're really not reducing that much. In fact, here I've done this, you can see here that our actually labor increase when you do, is going from two point five to two point eight. No big difference in material changes and a massive increase in special projects. So please, let's go back to the drawing board on that one. Please consider more robust business license head tax, underscore footage in parity with other cities, sell burn now, the weather's good, and we're not doing anything with it. We've known since two thousand and five that the city hall needs a seismic repair. Do it now, stop throwing away money on studies for a new city hall. We need to have a full understanding of cost centers. For example, the senior center and Blackberry Swim costs are in multiple places, so we really don't know what it's costing on a holistic basis. We've heard that word holistic, I really like it, and we need to look at that. Same for Chamber Commerce, there's rental rooms, festival waivers, contributions, et cetera. So we need to be able to make educated decisions. We need to make sure that our public funding benefits Cupertino taxpayers. For instance, the executive director has left the Historical Society until she's been replaced. Maybe we do need to renegotiate that forty thousand dollar payment to them. The supplemental report that Mr. Fu showed seems to suggest that we can get ourselves out of this mess through development fees. That is a false economy and, and we, we need to do better on, we won't do better on sales tax if we don't get new, good, great retail. All of that said, I am in favor of competitive, or actually better than competitive wages for staff. Now is the time to retain, and by the way, retrain. I love Jennifer's comments and also saw some nodding back on the staff there. So we need to retain and attract the best and the brightest. To sum up, the reductions are insufficient. It's kind of like saying, well, we're eating five desserts and now you can only eat three desserts, but we really need to be eating one or zero desserts because we are going to be on a diet after all. So thank you very much. We've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Thank you, Rota. Next, we have Dave McElroy, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. Council, thank you for letting us get up and speak. Mayor, I sent you a video showing how to do water management. I've offered to train your staff on that. I've been doing water management just under fifty years. We cut Hewlett-Packard's water by forty percent. We cut Tandem computers by forty percent. We got hundreds of thousands in savings on just two apartments for Sobrato Corporation. All of this has been audited. City of San Jose said it wasn't possible, so Tandem said, well, then audit us. And they audited with Brown and Caldwell Engineering, and they found it to be true with just software. You can't schedule water without science and math. And I partnered with a supercomputing company. They have the software. The server that their software is on is so protected, their clients are Apple, Facebook, Boeing, Google, and so it's super safe. They even have a government site. It is cloud because that's the most efficient way to do it. I would like to train your staff. I'll do it on performance. So if we save water, I get paid. If I don't save you water, then I don't get any money. Very simple. I love Cupertino, it's the best city on the planet, can't imagine living anywhere else. I think we have the best staff. I also want to echo that our staff needs to be paid more than competitively because we are one of the best places in Santa Clara Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And our final speaker in Community Hall is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean. And then we will move to Zoom.
Boy, do I love that proposal! That sounds great to me! Figure out how we can reduce our fixed expenses! So enter. Okay, good evening, Mayor Wei, council members and staff. As you know, my name is Jean Bedord and I'm a resident here. I'm here to commend you for your work on this year's budget. In reading the budget message, I'm impressed by the notable accomplishments by each department. You've done a lot this year, despite all the turmoil in City Hall. It's tough to cut budgets when previous councils increased budgets without a lot of discipline. Wasn't it something like twelve new positions in the last budget? I've been through the same situation, when a company I worked for expected to grow to a hundred and twenty million dollars a year in revenue from their hundred million dollars, but then sales went south and declined to eighty million dollars. Well, the immediate first year is tough, as everyone has to adjust to a new normal. I am pleased that there are no layoffs included in the budget. That's reassurance to staff that they are valued. However, it does mean that job responsibilities will need to be shifted between departments, so that will require flexibility and budget adjustments to reflect those changes. I'd also like to point out that bad decisions by previous councils have significantly impacted the current budget. A year ago, council voted to reject four hundred thousand dollars in a state grant for costs associated with the housing element. So now the city has to pay those costs out of their general fund this year. The obstruction of new developments has also impacted the budget. It took six years to approve Westport. The increase in annual property taxes is not, is projected to not occur until twenty-twenty-five. On the sheet, Balco is projected to kick in in twenty-thirty. But keep in mind, the original proposal was in twenty-fifteen, and those fifty acres are still an empty lot. Isn't it time to improve our reputation with developers so that we can get more development and thus more property tax? Let's increase our revenue. I have to say, overall, the budget cuts are thoughtful. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Jean. And we will move to the Zoom group. We have Govind Tadakari, San Ar, Luis Sadadi, Peggy Griffin, and that's it. Welcome, Govind.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wei and council members. I think the presentation was really good and I'm very happy that every department has gone through, you know, they have used their ability to cut costs in, you know, in a very thoughtful way which will help them. Of course, we still are in, in terms of headcount, we could do a little better, but I think, you know, I won't say that the current proposal has any deficiency as of now, so that's not the main argument, the main thing I would like to talk about. The things which I would like to talk about is essentially to do with community funding, which is on page thirty-six, and the law enforcement budget, and then the community development. So in terms of community funding, I fail to see why, first of all, we probably need to have a ranking of these community services. I think, you know, cutting the West Valley Community Services by two hundred dollars, I think that is going to really hurt because we definitely, human services offered city should be something we should be considered at a, you know, should be at the top of priorities. And I think, you know, reducing the budget by two thousand five hundred dollars for West Valley Community Services and some of the other things which are listed in, in terms of community funding, maybe eight thousand dollars, I think we can look for those. I think they deserve to be, services are pretty important, especially the West Valley Community Service. The second thing I would like to say is, the law enforcement budget, if I remember right, I was studying it two or three weeks ago, and I found that the budget went up from sixteen point some odd figure to seventeen point eight in the proposed budget. And I could, I could not figure out how, how that particular increase happened for more than a million dollars. And I would think that, just like all the other services that we contract and every other department who renders service to us, we should hold the line on law enforcement. We try to see if we can stay with the projected thing of sixteen point something and find out, you know, what is going to be hit for us as of now until the rates are renegotiated as per the new year, June twenty-twenty-four. So that's second input from my side. The third input is that, in terms of community development, the allocation of the two slots of fifteen thousand dollars, I think absolutely there should be no, we definitely want to make sure that recession is already there on the horizon, so we have to make sure that we can handle homelessness and other services kind of in a respectable way. I would like to support, you know, those. Thank you very much, that's pretty much from my side.
Thank you, Govind. Next, we have San Ar, followed by Luis Sadadi, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor Wei and city council. I would like to firstly comment that eliminating recs and freezing recs is different from headcount cuts. And when we talk about reduction in positions and then talk about vacant. And when we talk about reduction in positions and then talk about vacant positions, those are not the same thing. Eliminating vacant positions is eliminating recs. Eliminating headcount is eliminating current expenses. And I would remind all of our council members that the community in this budget is paying a heavier price than staff. Staffing should be compared to the levels they were at when budgets were at these levels several years ago. Right now, we have a significantly higher headcount in staffing at a much lower budget level, and all of the cuts today have come nearly entirely from programs that the community is going to experience. I am dismayed that we are cutting programs for kids and teens. I would hope that all of you on the council dais are supporters of our U. We're cutting programs like Bobertino. I don't know how many of you have ever attended any of the youth and teen events that our city conducts. These are fantastic and vibrant events that really bring our teen and youth together. Of all the events that Parks and Rec had to cut, I'm dismayed that they picked Bobertino. Likewise, I'm dismayed they picked the festivals and removed funding for the festivals. I'm also dismayed that we are not cutting in Public Works. Public Works has a number of study projects, probably over 16, and we need to reduce these down to under five. Please look for places where the community will have the least impact in terms of the enjoyment of the city. And underutilized projects, especially study projects that don't make it to implementation, are going to pay the price. I'm really disappointed that Public Works is having a much lower reduction than what Parks and Rec is having right now. Parks and Rec is the face of the city to the, to the restants. Cutting events like Movies in the Park, I don't know if any of you have ever been to Movies in the Park. It will really help if the council members attend these Parks and Rec events. Movies in the Park is a wonderful festival, and we are cutting that. I request you to please make deep cuts. All of the recs must be taken out. Any of you that have held a real job in a corporate world understand the grim realities of today. I mentioned just yesterday, in the last six months, this 200,000 layoffs in the tech community.
Thank you, Sam. That is your time. So we have Peggy Griffin and Luis Sadadi. I see Luis Sadadi has two hands raised. They were both raised in time, so I'll call on both names just in case someone else is using your login. But first, we have Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. Could you put up my slide, please?
Yes.
You got it?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I want first, since the slide is up here, I want Attachment J Law Enforcement, I went through, and I happened to notice that at the top here is the ACFR. And on, in 2022, the Priority One, that's like really critical response time, was 5.33 minutes. The ideal is five minutes. So we're a little bit slow. But when I look at the Attachment J for Law Enforcement, they're proposing almost two more minutes more than the ideal, which is five minutes. This is a 31% increase in response time from 2022. And if you looked at the surveys, everybody wanted law enforcement to stay. I don't understand. I'd like you to explain, are we losing deputies? What's happening to make this so bad response time? Because that will affect, if you're dying, you want some, or someone is attacking you, you want someone to be there quickly. And this will affect the entire city. So please answer this question for me. For the overall, first, I want to address that the Westport is a better project right now because we have housing instead of office. We need housing. The $4,000, 400 K grant required that you do hard of the city, and the city was not planning on that. It would have cost us more money. So, that said, I'd like you to, on taxes, consider the TOT increase. Look at all the community funding, the Historical Society, Sister Cities. I would like to tell you that Sister Cities probably does not affect as many people as Movies in the Park, Shakespeare in the Park, Teen Center. Look at the impact to the community when you're cutting. The new City Hall, we shouldn't even be studying this. Please, the council has the opportunity and the ability to stop this. I agree with the Parks and Recs, the other cuts, and I think I'm almost out of time. Cut travel. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker is Luis Sadadi. Welcome, Luis.
Hi, Mayor. This is Ava Chow. I, I thought it was a general link. I'm sorry. Is it okay that I speak?
Yes, you had your hand raised in time.
Okay. My name is Ava Chow. I am a teacher first, and I'm also ACUSD School Board member. I am speaking on behalf of my own. Thank you for allowing me to speak, dear Honorable Mayor Way, our City Council and staff. I am very happy to see that all of our City Council members are present for our meetings and that we are working together. I would like to especially thank all the staff members working on gathering public input for the budget. I personally, myself, contributed to the survey that they were doing in public outreach on Earth Day. I also saw them at the Toyacau Cherry Blossom Festival. I appreciate seeing that each of the departments doing their part in reducing their budgets as you all are experts in your respective departments and working hard to figure out ways together so that we can come together and come to a budget that we can all work with. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. And so our final speaker will be Luis Sadadi. You also had your hand raised in the nine-minute time limit. Welcome, Luis.
Hi, this is Luis Sadadi, and I also really appreciated the staff working together and coming together with such a coordinated budget in just one month. That's amazing. And, and I also appreciate seeing all five council members being present today. Previously, two council members had walked off the dais, and actually, one council member had walked off the dais for two meetings. So rather than addressing questions from the public or the council because of the findings by the grand jury and the independent private investigator about their relentless demands and questions behind the scenes to staff. So now I see all five council members are present, and I ask that the questions, especially from those two council members that walked off the dais, rather than having questions asked of them, ask their questions of the staff without, one, cutting off the city attorney, the manager, or any of the staff's answers, and, two, that any questions be directed towards forward-looking, problem-solving, win-win solutions rather than backwards fault-finding and nitpicking. Now that we have all the five council members on the dais, they can demonstrate an ability to work together for forward-facing, win-win solutions rather than nitpicking and fault-finding. The overwhelming Cupertino majority of the 60,000 Cupertino residents, not just the five usual people who are friends of the two council members that walked off, but the 60,000 Cupertino residents really want the fault-finding and blaming stuff. They want forward-facing, win-win solutions, especially in this budget process. And it's very interesting to me that at the same time, the grand jury and the private investigator cited those two council members that walked off the dais rather than face questions, cited them for their abusive demands of the staff. But yet, one is talking about decreasing the number of staff, and another person who's a friend of these people is saying, let's cut more staff. So you want more from staff, but you also want to decrease the number of staff and the budget for the staff. Very weird thinking. And what is done in front of the scene is different than what is done behind the scenes. And I just think that walking off the dais was like something that could not be denied. Three seats and two empty ones.
Thank you, Luis. That is your time. Mayor, that is our final speaker.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thanks for all the comments. I'm going to bring this back to council for discussion.
Sooda Mayor, if we can take maybe a 10-minute break?
Yes, okay. So yes, please take a five-minute break. Okay. Thank you. So we'll come back on 7:06. Back to the Cupertino City Council meeting. We are going to continue. We've closed the public comments period, and I'd like to bring the discussion back to council. I'd like to propose that the council concentrate on, our purpose is to provide direction to staff to come back with a budget proposal by June, the first week of June, so that we can pass the proposal. So the directions are, that I think the staff needs clear directions on some of the directions that the council are talking about. But I wrote down a few things, which one is the Historical Society and Sister City or related expenses from organizations that's proposed by Councilmember Chow, and also the community funding that I would really love to keep it at this 32, 500 level, and that's 50% cut already, and reduce staffing more that's proposed by Chow and maybe more? Did you, I'm not so sure. Maybe not. And that, I just jot down if I miss something. And the festival fee cost, I think staff might need a little bit more direction on that one, too. If there are more, please, on your discussion, propose it so that we can maybe do a straw vote so that the council, the staff has more clear direction to come back next time. Before that, can I ask City Attorney a question? One of this, this public comment was that we need to fight this. Then we passed on a closed session and reported back on the open session that we make, we voted to authorize you to appear to CDTFA if the ruling says that's...
Yes, that's correct. So that was an act, a reportable action that the City Council took in closed session. So, you know, we do have authority to do that if and when we receive a final decision from CDTFA.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to tell the, Jennifer's not here, that we are going to fight. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm open up for discussion, so please concentrate on the items you would like the council to give staff clear directions. So, Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So I would suggest that we remove the manager contingency, which was added in around 2013 to 14 at around a $439,000 value, and it increased to over $500,000. And a couple of years ago, I'd asked to have it removed. It was dropped to $75,000, and the previous two actuals show zero was spent in this, in this current budget. So I would suggest that we completely remove that, and if the manager needs to have that contingency, have it come to council. Additionally, the contingency amount, which was materials plus cost alloc, contract services, that was also added around 2013 to 14. I realize you've dropped it down to 1.25%. It's my understanding that all of your contracts, you do put in a contingency, sometimes 10, sometimes 15%. I would actually recommend that we remove the 1 1/4% in that those amounts would come to council should you need it. I was unaware of the, the ACFR indicating the increase in emergency response time. So that is disturbing. And I did bring up earlier that on page 276 of the budget, we have over $1 million, which is listed as miscellaneous. My request is that it no longer say miscellaneous, that it does say that the amount is a donation from Apple for two sheriff deputies, 2,725 hours for BEAT-C5. And I think that's important, especially if we're seeing this reduction in service with the emergency response time. That is very concerning. Before we make a decision on this, this City Hall issue, I would like to know how much money we have spent over the years on studies because we're looking at another $500,000. There were studies in 2011 and going all the way back to 2005, which have gone nowhere. And the previous council had a subcommittee, which I served on, and our recommendation came from the city staff who did a lot of work and made the recommendation that we do the renovation. So that, that was $27 million. And I would want to remind everyone that we do have $22 million in debt that's, that's being serviced currently. I would like more specifics regarding all of the waived fees between the Sister Cities. I actually totaled up, if you add the law enforcement, Sister Cities over $142 million. I was low before. I looked at the new numbers here. So I think that would help us to, to make a decision about that. Just, we need to have complete numbers. Lastly, I've got a question. If you, if we have the 14 employees that are vacant positions, does that funding go to unassigned fund balance? Or, you know, what happens to it at the end of the year?
So we are proposing to remove those voting positions from the budget, so they wouldn't be budgeted at all.
Okay. So what's concerning about that is that we've had members of the public say that we have overworked staff, but we have 14 positions which have been kept vacant in order to essentially have a pool of money in order to draw from for the $6 million, well, subsidy, I don't know how to word it exactly, to benefit to the, to the budget, the structural deficit that we have there. So I just hope that everybody understands that, that 14 positions have been kept unfilled and that there is a purpose for that with regards to the budget. Thank you.
Okay, yes. So may I ask the council's preference? Because we have, somebody's, he notes, right? City Manager? We have now, Councilmember Moore have, I think, one, two, three, four, five, according to what I put on note, that she would like to, staff to have clear direction from council. Do we want to wait until all five council members have our questions to decide, or should we decide now to a straw vote? What would the preference?
Sooda Mayor, if possible, we would like to get all of the proposal from all council members and be able to give us some time to consolidate the proposal and show it on the screen for you to take a straw.
Okay, sounds good. So let's go to, with the next council member, please. Councilmember Chow?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, I, I hope that we can keep art in unexpected places. We had quite sufficient art in Rio Fe, which was diverted to another project when, and then we turn around and cut art in unexpected spaces, which should be justifiable to spend for art in Rio Fe. So I think that doesn't make sense. We should keep that. And I hope that we continue the public safety forum, which is very popular, and it reduce potential more extent, potential future spending if we educate the public well. And we should not cut Bobertino and Movies in the Park. And so I hope that this, these programs with huge community impact will be removed, moved from the cut. And I hope that we can revisit the festival cost. Besides, the staff has proposed to cut sheriff cost for the festivals, but then there are still significant subsidies totaling $100, I think, $20,000 for all the festivals. So that probably, I hope the staff can look in deeper into that, and maybe one organization shouldn't have two festivals getting the fee waiver. And then I still wished, could we get an explanation of why the response... And then I still wished, could we get an explanation of why the response time will be delayed by two seconds? This is, might be life and death for some people, so...
Suda Mayor, we're, we're trying to get in contact with the sheriff's office, and we'll do the best we can to provide an answer.
Great, thank you. And then regarding the vacancies, I, I'm just trying to understand what is the staff's rationale in making the recommendation? So as we can see from here, we are transferring six million dollars from general fund. Basically, we have a nine million dollar deficit still. But with fourteen vacant positions, that saves six million dollars. If we could possibly eliminate twenty-eight vacant positions, then that would actually make us have a balanced budget. And twenty-eight would put us to be about the same level as one year before. And we still would have fifteen vacancies to fill. And as the staff said that they are only advertising five at a time right now, because it takes time to fill these vacancies. So I am, I'm trying to wrap my head around why staff does not propose more, eliminating more vacant positions, especially, I think about twenty-two was added last year. And the reason more positions were added last two years were because the city actually has quite significant increase in revenue. So I understand that the budget situation was very different in the past two years, yeah.
Suda Mayor, would you like some explanation on some of the questions? So I understand there were two questions heavily on the sheriff's response time. We were just able to hear back from the sheriff's department. There were some outlier events that caused a, a delay in response time in last year. We don't want to go into detail of what those events are, but those were the outliers that caused a further delay. But the normal response time has been adhered to. That's on the sheriff's contract. The elimination of the proposed fourteen vacancies. We do have quite a bit of recruitment going on for the current vacancies to provide the, the essential operation to keep the city going. If the council would like to see further reduction of the staff force, it is certainly the council's discretion. I just want to note to council that that will severely impact, maybe it's not severely, but it will have a substantial impact to the current city operation. We are in current recruitment to bring some of these vacancies to be filled.
So my understanding from the chart the staff provided was twenty-two were just added last year. And then, so if the staff could look into, do we, do we need all the remaining vacant positions to provide essential services? I would like to know what are they? And so, so we have more understanding of the vacancies and more understanding of why there is an increase and we cannot reduce to provide services.
So Suda Mayor, as I mentioned, if the council would like to see further reduction in, in the staff force, that is certainly your discretion.
Any other comments? Because I did put the, you did write down the community funding grant that I would like to revisit.
Yeah, actually, I'm not saying I want the staff time, to reduce staff, I want options. Could we provide, could the staff propose more options for us to consider? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frum and Vice Mayor Mohan, do you have any proposals, discussions?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I support the increase in funding for the community grants. And I think you, that's already on the list. Regarding the sheriff's contract, we don't really, are we just doing a placeholder for this year? Because the contract isn't up till next year.
Yeah, I should clarify that, that the contract is not on the agenda. I mean, we, we don't have any control over that cost at this time. We will be, it will be come back to council for a, a, a new contract with the sheriff.
Suda Mayor, if I may, provide some clarification. So the current contract takes us through next June. And every year in the current contract, it would allow a CPI plus a two percent increase for the sheriff personnel increase, which that cost has been implemented into the next year's budget. But as City Attorney Jensen mentioned, that we will be starting a new conversation to negotiate the next ten-year contract with the sheriff, which will come before council for consideration next year.
Okay, so what we see in the budget today is the current contract plus the CPI?
Plus two percent, that is correct.
Plus two percent, which is what you've already negotiated.
Which is the current contract, yes.
My, my other question was, I know there's some thought that's gone into eliminating the fourteen vacancies, and depending on how, what comes out of it, other positions could be eliminated. And that, that's at our discretion. But we should also be looking at the value that these positions. Every time you cut a position, and I don't think, however wealthy we've been in the past, that we've had just lots of positions not, doing nothing. So I, I just want us to keep in mind that every time we cut a position and we're expecting additional services, or at least the same level of services, that doesn't pencil out. Every position cut has a service impact to it. Not to say that we shouldn't be cutting more positions, but we have to be sort of clear-headed about what that involves. My other question was, since we, since the budget expect, is expected to be balanced by removing, by reducing the reserves, what is the plan to replenish the reserves? Not, not this year, but next year and so on? Is there a plan? Because we've taken out a substantial, we will be taking out a substantial chunk this year. So what happens next year in twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-six, twenty-seven, and so on?
So we're currently proposing to use unassigned fund balance, which does not have a component to replenish. If we were to dip into our economic uncertainty reserve or other reserves per the fund balance at one-time use policy in the budget book, there does prescribe a payback, so that we'd have to come up with a plan for how to replenish it. But currently, our unassigned fund balance is about fifty million dollars. So we wouldn't be coming close to touching the twenty-four million in the economic. So that, there's different levels, and maybe, Thomas, we can bring it up.
Right, I think there was a slide which showed...
Correct, so there's different levels. And like I said, the policy for the unassigned, it does not require a payback. But for any of the other restricted, committed, or assigned fund balances, if we were to start to dip into those, we would need to develop a, a payback plan.
Okay, although it would be the...
If we can share Thomas's screen, thank you. So this shows you, oops, here I go. It shows you the levels of reserves that we have in the general fund. And then I think it looks like page twenty-two of the budget document. If you go further down, I believe, or up into the policy, it talks about what we have to do, changes to replenishment process. So we would need to come back with a plan to replenish if we hit one of the other assigned or committed categories, but not for the unassigned.
Okay, but although it would be the prudent thing to do to get our, even the unassigned reserves back to...
Which I think, in, at policy, it's set at half a million dollars. So we'd still well, be well, well within policy using the, the six million at, currently at fifty million. So we'd be at forty-four million.
The unassigned is five hundred thousand, right?
Mm-hmm. And we're currently at about fifty million.
Okay, all right, got it, thank you.
Councilmember Moore, you had your hands up. You want to, you have one minute left.
Quickly, with regards to the, the unassigned fund balance, when did it, it, how, how many years did it take for it to get to? It's, it's fifty-two point eight on slide twenty-seven. How many years did it take to get to that? And was it just from sales tax revenue? Or were there other components?
In past years, it's primarily been driven by sales tax revenue, but also property and TOT taxes. We saw big increases prior to the pandemic. Although historically, we have at mid-year transferred out a large portion of the unassigned fund balance to the capital reserve. We stopped that process in March of two thousand and twenty-one. As we had gotten word in December, the upcoming audit for CDTFA, we thought it was prudent to hold on to those dollars as opposed to transferring them. But, sorry, March twenty... Twenty-two, thank you, sorry about that. The years get a little mixed up after COVID. But the other big thing that caused fund balance to grow is sales tax during COVID. We saw phenomenal growth in our sales tax category, and we did not have the expenditures. We weren't spending that much more to bring fund balance down at that point. So those are the, over the past few years, sales tax, property, TOT. Over the last couple of years during COVID, it's really been sales tax that's been a major driver.
Thank you. And if I look back at last year's budget planning, will I see the unassigned balance? Is this fund balance impact, is this a typical report? So really, I'd want to go look back maybe four years and see, see what that total was like.
It looks like Budget Manager Lenn is bringing up. So we do include fund balance as part of all of our quarterly reports in each budget. So we generally come back and give you an estimate. And then first quarter, we, we update that estimate. We tell you where we ended the previous year. Sorry, just fill in Thomas, Thomas. So each budget document will have this page that shows you for the general fund by classification, two prior year actuals. So there you can see our total unassigned was twenty-one million, and then it went up to twenty-seven.
Was it a policy from council to grow the unassigned fund balance?
I know, the, the policy that's currently in the policy book is to try to transfer those dollars out of capital reserve. At the same time, we're trying to balance not moving all of those dollars out of the general fund to capitals, so we were trying to temper that growth as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And do we have more questions? If not, I'd like to wrap up this part of the discussion. And, oh, Councilmember Frum?
I, I suspect that there will probably be a lot of overlap between what you want to say and what I would want to say, so I will let you go first.
No, I already done my, no, I'm, I already set my piece.
Oh, okay, all right. I mean, I, I guess the, the one thing that I, I would ask staff to perhaps come back with is it sounds like there is some desire to, to save certain, you know, community events from the chopping block. So if there's a way for us to see sort of how many of the additional vacant positions would need to be removed in order to account for those events, I think that we would all appreciate that. That way, we can at least make that decision with clear eyes, understanding the, the nature of the cost benefit. I, I certainly appreciate what the Vice Mayor has said about, you know, the value that each staff member is bringing and the service level impacts that occur when you aren't able to fill those positions and when you aren't able to keep people in those positions over a duration of time, keep them trained, et cetera.
So now I, I do want to follow up with that. I, I do value, even we have staff vacancies that's not filled. I don't think we're going to fill them right away. And to eliminate a staff position, I think it's hard to bring it back. So I like to see the current fourteen, and then I know the staff's going to be carefully not adding the thirty vacancies. I like to keep those vacancies so that, or, you know, according to, give it more flexibility for the staff to work. That's my intention, but, you know, we can get the council's consensus on that one. And second, I do agree that it's nice to bring some, maybe moving the park, something back. So if you have a number that we can maybe, I hate to say this, but dip just a little bit more into our fifty million dollar unassigned budget. I think for this year, just to lessen a little bit, I might be able to incline into do that. So that is just for you to present it, so we can all talk about it.
So thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, Councilmembers. So I have taken a lot of notes on the suggestions and recommendations coming from Councilmember. So let me get together with the budget team, and maybe with the fifteen-minute recess, we can put together. In addition, and I just wanted to say that, so we will look into ways to accommodate or detect the feedback from council. As, as Mayor Way you alluded to, there might be potential to, to dip deeper into the reserve to save some of these programs. And then one more thing I will say is that we could definitely look into potentially cutting additional positions from the current staffing pool. We'll try to do the best estimate in terms of what that impact to the city operation will look like. No guarantee, again, so we're going to try to wrap it up in maybe a fifteen-minute recess and then come back to you, so you can maybe take a straw vote, and then we can come back on the June of six.
Right, one more thing I'd like to add is I understand that we're not taking into future income, future extra property tax. Westport is moving really well ahead. So I think we do have opportunities, or realistically, we can sort of estimate what's, what other income that we have in the future. So, because I see the, the rural home and townhomes are up already, and I think they're advertising to sell it. So I like maybe staff put that a little bit of a concrete, the ones that for sure we're going to get in the next two years, one or two years. So that could offset the general fund depletion, the six million dollars. Just, I'd like to have a little concrete numbers on that one.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So we understand, and as Director Alfaro has taught me how to balance the budget, we can't, we can't commit to something that hasn't happened, but we'll definitely take that into consideration.
But just like a concept, right? Yeah, so thank you. So fifteen minutes, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, just real quick. So I've got a kind of a running tally on the things that we've, the, the grants and the fee waivers. So sister cities, we're at a hundred and forty-two thousand, it's actually over. Free facility use, minimal, it's four thousand dollars. Festival fee waivers, doesn't anticipate the Ikebana show, that's a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and ten. Community grants, we're at thirty-two thousand, five hundred. Previously, we were sitting around this seventy to ninety thousand dollar range. So some total, we're at about two hundred thousand plus for the, all, all of these waivers that we're doing. So that's what I'm talking about. We need a big picture, that, that would help to decide where to cut. Thank you.
So maybe one of the directions that I prefer is, do we want to even put that into a consideration? That, that could be a council decision, too, a straw. Do we really want to get in, dig into the details on the Historical Society, Sister City contract while we're doing this budget? So I think I would like to have that option, too. Not that we're not going to look at it. Yeah, so that's, that would, I would like to have that option, too. Okay, so it's more options is better. Yeah, sure, go ahead, and then we're going to...
So, yeah, I agree, more options is better. And the way that I've seen other city do it when doing budget cut is maybe here is our eighty-six million dollar, eighty-six million dollar budget option. And then propose here are additional things we could do to reach eighty million dollar budget, so we have complete balance without dipping into general fund. So then options, then the council can decide, that would really help us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we get staff a lot of work, fifteen minutes. If you haven't had dinner, like me, well, we can go get a little...
There's, there's dinner in the city hall. So maybe I can ask for a twenty-minute, actually?
Okay, twenty minutes.
We'll come back around eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All righty, it's eight oh one. We're going to resume the City Council meeting. First, I'd like to thank City Manager Wu and our wonderful staff for putting together, real quickly, what the council would like to see and discuss further and get a straw vote on the clear directions for staff to come up with a budget proposal next meeting, June sixth, right? Okay, thank you, please proceed, City Manager Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So thank you for the feedback, Councilmembers. And we, in reviewing my notes and compared that with my team, we noted a total of nine recommendations coming from all council, councilmembers and several follow-up that we will provide. And just to note that we will have additional information following the questions that were unanswered today in the packet that will be released for the June sixth council meeting. So you'll find supplemental information as part of that, and that should be able to answer most of your questions from today. In addition, when we come back for June sixth, the final adoption will incorporate the direction from council right now, based on the suggestion that we're outlined. Without further ado, so Thomas is going to try to figure out a way to put the list of nine asks on the screen, so for council to take a straw vote. So I could walk council through individually. The first ask was to restore the full community funding to the proposed budget of thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Mayor, if you want to conduct a vote?
So City Minister Jensen, uh, City Attorney Jensen, what, should we make a motion? Second, a vote, or should we just do a... So City Minister Jensen, City Attorney Jensen, what should we make a motion, second and vote, or should we just do a straw vote?
I think if it's, if it's, if it's your preference, I think a straw vote would be adequate direction for staff to come back and then council could take final action on the budget at the, at the June sixth meeting.
So if we do a motion and a second and do sort of a more official vote, with that, that doesn't prevent the council discussion on June sixth either, right?
No.
Okay, so I'd like to ask the council's preference, just maybe just let me know. Yes.
I'm sorry, so may I have some clarification on this of restoring to the thirty-two-five? I thought the budget that we were looking at actually had the thirty-two-five in there.
No, it was cut twenty percent, it was twenty-four or something.
It was down to twenty-four and then we're at thirty-two-five, okay. So this is basically putting it what I thought it was, so I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay, so my question right now is, should we just do official motion, second and vote? Or should we just do a sort of a straw vote? What is the council's preference?
My preference is for a straw vote for each item.
Okay, and straw vote instead of circuit motion, okay. All right, so how about Councilmember Fu?
The item on number eight, I think is responsive to what I was asking for, is that, okay.
And I will go into a little bit more detail.
Just one first. No, what I'm asking is each item, we're going to go through each item and we're going to do it a straw vote or a second and motion vote. We're not going to together, we're going to do each item. So is that a preference, just do a straw vote? Okay, straw vote. Councilmember Chow?
We still have some questions.
Yeah, we'll come to that.
On these numbers, I need to.
Right now, I'm just asking on each item whether we should just do a straw vote or should we do motion, second and vote?
Straw vote is.
Okay, straw vote is good, alrighty. So now we're on number one, if there's no questions, let's do a straw vote.
I mentioned the Public Safety Forum, that's not in the list. Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, so number one, straw vote, yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes for me? Yes, yes, I'm just going to go from left.
Wait, it's A, you mean A or number one?
For the record, you're voting on A?
Oh, I'm A, I'm sorry, yes.
Maybe we should read it out.
Yes, now, okay, we're going to do a straw vote on number A, number, oh.
Restore full community funding to thirty-two.
Thirty-two, five hundred, add back eight thousand, and the straw vote is five zero.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So these are other items. This is the first one, the suggestion was to remove the city manager's contingency fund and that will be a saving of fifty thousand dollars.
Do we just vote or do we want to talk about it? It's council's preference.
Can I ask a quick question? Does this eliminate the contingency altogether? Does the balance is zero?
This is the city manager's contingency fund.
It's the complete.
That is correct.
So it's already a reduction from seventy-five thousand.
It means now is zero.
The city manager's proposed budget is a reduction from seventy-five thousand to fifty thousand and this suggestion will completely wipe out the contingency fund.
And my, so my understanding, it wasn't used in the past?
So these funds are usually used for emergency purposes, for items that needed to move fast without coming to council so that we don't cause any delay.
For example, if there's a water leak, you have to authorize over the weekend.
But Water League Public Works has their contingency fund also, no, do they? Each department, I thought, has their contingency fund.
So.
Through the mayor, the, this, the actuals have been zero for two previous consecutive years.
Understand that, but so we can just vote. I would not be for it because if we don't use it, it's still there. If we need an emergency and there's no meeting, I would be very afraid of something might happen. So wait a minute, we'll just get a straw vote. Councilmember Moore?
I'm in favor of removing this, we, the next item is a contract contingency.
Mayor Mohan? We're looking at number eight, one now.
I'm not in favor.
Okay, I'm not in favor either. Councilmember Chow?
I'm fine with keeping it since it's not really.
You're not in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Fu?
I'm also not in favor.
Okay, so it's four, one, okay, so now we move to number two, Council, uh, City Manager Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So the second item on the list is a proposal to remove the current contingency of one point two-five percent building for all materials and contract. If council decides to remove it, that will be a saving of about two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Just wanted to keep in mind that some contracts right now does not include any contingency. So if there's any adjustment needed on that contract, would come back to council for additional funding appropriation, which may cause a delay to some of these projects.
And I don't consider that a saving because it needs to be done, needs to be done, we just have to prove it.
Is this already a reduction from the current amount?
That is correct.
Right, it's what's the current?
I believe we're coming, Thomas, you can go ahead and.
It's a reduction from two point five percent to one point two-five percent of materials.
Already a fifty percent reduction, yeah.
Okay, so let's get a straw vote, Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
No.
I'm voting no. Councilmember Chow?
No.
Councilmember Fu?
No.
Okay, so it's no for, for one, okay, now, City Manager Wu, number three, please.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So number three, a point of clarification. So the Public Safety Forum is not being proposed to remove. However, the portion that is being proposed to eliminate is the cost on dinner.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood.
So we went back and looked at the dollar amount that was allocated for the food preparation for last year's Public Safety Forum, which equates to about five thousand dollars.
Then I'm okay with removing the dinner. I, yeah, I was going to ask because last year was particularly big, then bigger than like previous. So I want, wondering, can we reduce the scope and still keep it? But it's good to know that it's only the dinner that's removed.
So number three is to continue the public forum but remove the dinner. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Yes, yes for me?
Point of clarification, are we voting to, to?
We're not changing it.
To not change it or to, to drop it off, drop off the dinner?
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, so the current proposal is not to touch the event itself but to eliminate any costs associated with providing dinner, which is five thousand dollars. That's the city manager's proposed budget.
So we are actually saying yes to support staff recommendation, that actually, that's actually no for number three, I believe.
No, yes.
Number three is to keep the dinner.
No, no, number three is to reduce the dinner.
Number three would be to eliminate the dinner, so we might want to, we might want to re-vote just to make sure that everybody knows what they're voting on.
Then number three, then number three is the staff recommendation.
Right, no, excuse me, no, so.
Then why do we need to?
I misspoke as well. So number, number three would be to, to.
Eliminate.
Eliminate the, the entire event, right?
A point of clarification.
No, excuse me.
So point of clarification, I think when this nomination was made by Councilmember Chow, there was a misunderstanding that the event itself is going away. The event itself is not going away, the clarification is that staff was only proposing to eliminate the food costs associated with the event.
So I withdrew my proposal and we probably don't need to vote, right? We are just going with staff recommendation.
That sounds good.
Sounds right, that sounds like what our consensus is.
Very confusing.
Thank you. Can I just add one point of clarification?
Sure.
This would not reduce the budget, this has already been taken out of the budget, so just making sure it's clear, thank you.
So pretend nothing has happened for this one in particular. Through the mayor, number four is to retain art in unexpected places. So since this involves a lot of staff time, so what we can do is to provide a rough estimate about ten thousand dollars that is associated with the event and roughly five or six or seven full-time employee to support this event. And I can't give you a dollar, a total dollar amount. However, I could give you what was being asked by Councilmember Fu and earlier, an average cost for one staff position, which is equate to a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per one position.
I thought this would require that much staffing time. I thought this is a fine arts commission that's managing that.
My understanding is that it would require staff to monitor and also implement the program, not just define arts.
So there is, is there a way to keep it but reduce the scope?
We could definitely talk about it with a director center separately. However, it would require quite a bit of a staff time to keep this program.
In light of that, we just transferred the art in lieu fee to another park. I feel pretty bad that we are not supporting art in Cupertino.
So, so let's take a straw vote?
Pardon, Councilmember Moore? Through the mayor, I'd like to make a comment. So if we look at this, the development revenue estimates, there are a number of projects and perhaps staff could just provide us an offline memo because each one of these projects has to either provide art or do the in lieu fee. So that, we're looking at Apple VP One will have to bring art to the community, Canyon Crossing will. Allen Row, we already have seen their rendering for their sculpture, which they're providing. Marina Plaza will provide art, Westport, Hampton, Danza Hotel, Cupertino Village, Valco, all of these projects. And there's actually a really good dispersal throughout the city. So we are going to have a number of art projects. And if there is going to be a little offline memo, the, the dollar amount can be estimated because you've already estimated the value of these, of these projects in order to create this development revenue estimate. So we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of art which will be coming to the community. So with that, I am in favor of removing actually art in unexpected places, so I'm voting no, thank you.
I'm voting no as well. I'm a no. Councilmember Chow?
I will still hope to keep this program. Yeah, I will vote yes, but yeah.
Councilmember Fu?
I'll also vote no.
Okay, so it's four, one.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So number five on the item is to continue the Bobatino event. Our best estimate is about five thousand dollars for material and in addition to a ten, total of ten part-time employees to monitor and also staff that event.
Yes, as a question, I do have.
A question in terms of scope, I think Bobatino last year was especially comprehensive. It was not like that, it was, it used to be just in one Cupertino room in Queensland Center and pretty small in scope. So it, I think the scope determines how much it costs. But this is a award-winning event that has been a teen favorite. So compared with the community funding, say if we're adding eight thousand and now. Yeah, so it's possible to reduce the scope, I guess that's the question.
So my question is, what is the purpose of Cupertino? Just have fun, put the things together or, no, I'm asking staff.
Mayor Way, so I believe the original intent is to promote mental healthness for the teens. And however, my understanding from Director Sandro is that recently, especially last year, it was an opportunity for teens to come grab a boba and hang out. So the tables were not frequent as envisioned and therefore the, most of the funding that was utilized to provide bobas.
Through, through the mayor.
So, yes, please.
So that, we do have the teen commission and if the objective is to promote mental health, they could perhaps have that on their work plan and, and work towards that more directly than used through this event. And I'd like to hear what Rochelle has to say.
Thank you. So the city manager is correct, last year was definitely mostly kids coming just to pick up boba and boba is the biggest expense of this event. And yes, we are looking into other ways to actually incorporate the mental health aspect that would maybe actually be better for teens than what we saw last year at Bobatino.
Okay, so if no more questions, let's take a straw vote, Councilmember Moore? Oh, oh, sorry.
I had a quick question. So are you saying that the, the intent of the program will still be carried out without, without the additional funding?
Yes, mental health is still a very important issue with the teens and we will continue to work on other ways to address that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So I think the cost of boba has to do, is related to the scope of the event.
The cost of boba is related to how many teens show up to the event wanting boba.
So, but my, my understanding from the teen commission is they, it's meant to, to help with mental health but you don't want to advertise it as that. And so that's why you want to draw them in and then when you draw them in, then you provide them with services.
However, there are other ways for us to draw in teens to come to things besides spending that much money on a drink. But yes, we do not use the words mental health because the teens have let us know that that is not a way to get teens into an event.
So if we change to a different event, we will still need the staffing time for that other event?
Yes, however, like I said, the boba is a main piece of the funding for this event. So if we take out the boba, then it wouldn't be called Bobatino anymore but it would help with the fact that it's right now a ten thousand dollar event.
So let's take a straw vote, please. Councilmember Moore?
Just to be clear, this is, so if you vote no, that is, I'm in favor for the, a mental health, the work plan concept, okay, so I'm voting no, thank you.
A no for me as well. No for me. Councilmember Chow?
I would like to see if the staff can propose other alternatives. So I would like to still keep it until I see other options that cost less, thank you.
Your vote, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Fu?
No.
Let's move forwards, that's four.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So number six on the list is to continue movies in the park. Again, our best estimate is about three thousand dollars for a total of four movies that were shown last year, last summer, in addition to six part-time employees.
So my personal experience, I've never been there, so I really cannot comment on it. Any comments from staff, is it well-attended or is it real popular? Can we cut to two movies instead of four? So I really cannot comment on this. Chow, you probably just need to stay there.
Yes, the movies are well-attended, our only philosophy in deciding we were going to go with concerts this year instead of movies was the staffing, there is a movie screen that has to be put up, there is a sound system that has to be put up, there's generators that have to come out if we do the movies. So really, it was more of a, one is more fiscally responsible than the other, however, yes, they are popular events.
And you said you're going to do concerts instead?
We are doing thirteen concerts, but they are all at Memorial Park this year because that means that we don't have to have the extra staffing, which again, helps us with the funding.
I see, okay, thank you.
Mayor, so I believe the age bracket, the events serve are very different. I took my kids to movies in the park, they are in college now, but I went, when they, we had that, you sit on the park ground, so it's a smaller kids that we serve. But concerts serve an older population or seniors, little kids usually won't be attending concerts.
Well, so there are a lot of little kids at concerts, I won't lie, they're not necessarily there to listen to the music but it is still a family event because I get almost run over by them every time. But yes, the movies, we do make sure some of them are directed toward a younger age, some of them are a teenage and some of them are more adult movies.
More questions, suggestions, recommendations?
Yes, okay. So far, we've added back eight thousand, but we've taken off five thousand plus another ten thousand and then Bobatino puts it as another five thousand down, so if.
Point of clarification, those were never in the proposed budget.
Okay, okay, but looking at, they were never in the proposed budget. That's an interesting way to put it. So we're still, we're still not doing.
You're, you're, you're up eight thousand, but that's, that's really, that's, that's not really very much in a hundred million dollar budget, so don't, don't feel too bad about it.
Don't feel bad, okay, I thought we were doing well here.
How much is the six part-time staff for the four movies?
So as I mentioned, we can't quite quantify the total dollar amount for part-time but each full-time position equates to about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So I wouldn't necessarily take that in half.
But, but the movie is there only one night, so it's four nights.
Right, it'd be, we'd have to estimate the number of hours and I don't, Rochelle can correct me but I'm not sure that we were able to do that in the, the amount of time that we had.
Like, no, I guess for me, if I am comparing movies in the. Like, no. I guess for me, if I am comparing movies in the park versus $8,000 extra for the community organizations who likely can.
I think we do item by item, so let's concentrate on this one.
Then.
Any more questions, recommendations?
This has more impact to the community than.
You have more recommendations?
Eight thousand extra funding.
Um, I have a question. Um, are, are we going to be looking at perhaps any of the, the, the fee waivers? Um, there was one mention of like one, one entity getting a couple of fee waivers. So I'm just trying to look at, do we have some, do we have some pocket change we can pick up in order to keep a popular event that's $3,000 plus staff time?
Councilmember Foo, you have your light on?
Is there any way we can make that happen?
Yeah, I just wanted to get an idea in general. If we were to ask to have the, the movies in the park programmed back in, would that allow you to get additional cost savings on the, um, concert series or is that already fully programmed and?
Those contracts are already out inside.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so let's.
I had a quick question.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Uh, the, we, we talked about the movies in the park, but what about the commissioners dinner? Is there a way that we could sort of slip that in? I mean, the commissioners work hard, they don't have too much.
Let's do one, one item at a time. Yeah, let's not put things together. Yeah. So we're talking about moving the park right now. Let's, let's concentrate on that, please.
Um, Mayor, can, can I ask, um, I think, thank you for bringing up the festivals. I believe we also pay for staff, staffing time for all these festivals. Um, that they, some of them run all day. So what, how much part-time staff?
I really like to bring back to this, this item.
So we are paying more for community festivals with part-time staff? How much is that? Do we have any idea?
Through the mayor, if you would like me to answer that question, the staffing is a part of the numbers in the, in the funding. So under recreation, that includes the recreation staff. Under public works, that includes the public works staff.
Okay, so I think we can make a straw vote on this one and.
Mayor, one more comment.
Okay, sure.
So I did notice that the, the facility rentals, um, actually ended up being a deficit and that the, when we go over the fees for rentals, it should improve that situation. Um, and I'm gonna assume that it will not, uh, reach actual. Will we always be behind on what we're charging, um, for the facility rentals? Um, for room rentals at, like at Quinlan?
So we'll, we'll provide a follow-up to that question.
Okay, so I was trying to, once again, trying to get that $3,000 out of somewhere. All right, thank you.
I, I think as, um, as, um, we have the site on hand, so let's just concentrate on this one. And as, um, City Attorney Jensen said, we, our budget's over a hundred million dollars of three thousand plus. This may not be a big thing. So let's, uh, let's get a straw vote.
May we see it, how it's written again?
Thomas, can we put it back on the screen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue. Okay, so I, I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Yes for me. Uh, yes for me too.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we got a five zero. Continue.
Um, so the next suggestion was to reduce, um, staff team by additional 14, uh, full-time employees and that will bring a total saving of approximately 2.7 million dollars.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
This is already in the budget, right?
No, this is not. This will be in addition to.
Additional fourteen, fourteen plus fourteen.
Right, so that will be a total of 28 positions.
So, um, councilmember Moore has questioned.
Councilmember Moore?
That just seems like, uh, we're putting all of that reduction right up front as opposed to, it looked like we had 14 that were on, um, unfilled positions right now and then we're moving slowly at a nice moderate pace to 15 more for a total of 29. Is that right? Uh, and, and this proposal seems to slam all that right onto this year and that, that frightens me.
So what we had in our current proposed budget is before we had the news of the CDTFA audit, the city was planning to add 15. Instead of adding 15, the city is removing 14, right? And then the city plans to remove an additional three to four every year and then moving 45 by fiscal year 32, 33.
So, Mayor, so you mean?
Go ahead, councilmember Chow and then councilmember Foo.
So after the city added the 22 positions last year, the city was planning to add another 15 positions. And so I'm, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is the year before, we had 22 less positions. So I'm not really asking that, okay, we should just cut another 14. I'm asking is where are these 22 positions that we didn't need before and now they are essential? So what I need more, I think I need more visibility on where are the purposes they are serving that wasn't essential one year ago? And now they are essential. What are we doing now we were not doing a year or more before? So the more, it's not just numbered, more visibility on, on, like councilmember Mohan said, everyone serve a purpose, have a value. So I, without knowing that it's hard even for me to say, uh, yeah, I want to reduce 14. I don't know. So, so. So I was asking is can the staff bring back more information next time? Here are 14 possible positions we could cut, but here are the impact. Then next, in the next council meeting, the council can have, have more information. Maybe the council will decide these 14 are all essential. Yeah, thank you.
Through the mayor, um, so we have proposed a detailed table showing the 14 position that's in the proposed budget right now, where they are in each of the, uh, department. Um, and like councilmember Moore mentioned, we are proposing to cut additional, but, uh, positions through the next 10 years to a total of 45 position that will be cut by the end of year 10. Um, so last year's budget was built upon the total amount based on the operation needs that was according to the budget. Some of those positions ha- actually have been filled. Um, so if council's desire is to cut additional positions at this time to bring the staff level back to before the pandemic, we will need to do a deep dive of the operational analysis to provide that information, which, um, we're more than happy to do that, but that's not really the, what's before council today.
Confused the, the, okay.
Uh, would like, like councilmember Foo to, uh.
Maybe let us know what the 43 positions vacancies are, then that would help us. Thank you.
You have your light on?
Uh, I had my light on, but I don't any longer. I, I was just gonna say this, this sounds like something that would be a useful staff memo, um, and potentially if we needed to and it made a lot of sense, we could always revisit it as a, an adjustment to the budget later.
We can certainly do that.
Okay, so any more questions? If not, let's take a straw vote. Uh, councilmember Moore?
Okay, so I, items.
Revised the item. I'm not, I'm not asking to reduce staff by 14 now because I don't have information. So I'm revising this to me to say, um, provide us information on the, is it 34 vacancies, um, that we have right now? They are unfilled positions.
Through the mayor, point of clarification, are you withdrawing your recommendation in lieu of the memo that was suggested by councilmember Fuente?
Yeah, and then this should be considered together in the, um, in early June when we have the more information, then we could, we might have other.
Through the mayor, I, I don't believe that is the recommendation on the table. So what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing from you is you would like to withdraw your recommendation on removing the 14, to cut additional 14 positions. In lieu of that, um, as suggested by councilmember Fuente, we'll provide a informational memo on where the vacancies are and what positions there are.
And also I think like I said earlier that I would like options that in case we would like to see more instead of, in addition to the 14 proposed, let's say 20, let's say 25, what positions could be considered? And so that we can evaluate the impact. So 43 or 34 positions that's vacant and which ones could be non-essential for consideration? These are all unfilled position right now.
I, I, through the mayor, I don't believe that was, what was recommended, but it's your discretion to vote however you feels fit.
Why don't we vote on this one first and then we can have a new proposal if you have one. How's that? So let's take a straw vote as yes. Then on number seven.
Okay, uh, Moore, no?
No.
Um, no for me?
Uh, no.
No.
All right, so let's, um.
Continue?
Yes.
So the last item on the, um, list is to ask council in terms of the added, um, programs and services back on the, um, proposed budget, how council would like to compensate for these additional, um, spending. So either through the use of fund balance, um, or through additional reduction of the staff resource. Um, currently, what I have noted is a additional $8,000 to, um, a $3,000, $8,000 for the community funding in addition to $3,000 for movies in the park and six part-time employee. Um, roughly you're looking at maybe 10 to 25,000 dollars, uh, which will not equate to any full-time position. As we averaged it out, the full-time position will be 186,000 dollars. Um, that will be additional, um, withdrew from the, um, reserve, if, if that's council's discretion.
So the question is whether we want A or B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if we can suggest a, a C option, um, but I'm, I'm wondering if we could look, um, kind of scrutinize the library maintenance, um, budgeted amount of, um, 80, $89,000. Because to my knowledge, all we need to pay for, for library maintenance is the 39,000 for the, um, for the, 38 or 39,000 dollars for the fish tank and the rest of it is a pass-through to the joint powers authority for the Santa Clara Library District. And the other option would be to, um, see checking our actuals if there's, um, something within library services. So I know that this past year, um, we had budgeted for the 600,000, but this, uh, joint powers authority had enough, um, funds to completely covered our, cover our extra, um, the extra 12, um, library hours that it would be open. So, um, if we could look at an option C to see if there are places in the budget that perhaps could be, um, maybe they can be tightened up and we could get that funding another way rather than, because these are, um, th- these are pretty, uh, pretty difficult choices here, the fund balance versus reduction in staff. So I'm not really liking the reduction in staff and I'm just hoping that there's, that we can look, um, look a little harder on the library part instead.
Through the mayor, if I may, um, so I, I guess what I'm hearing is that option C is don't use, um, reserve, don't cut staff, uh, be more creative and come back with another way to figure out the differences.
So my, my question is, i- if those creative ways does happen, it does go back to the general fund. So if we just say, get it out of general fund and find ways to replenish the general fund, is that, does that equal?
Not necessarily. I mean, looking at my directors and they probably gonna hate me and start throwing rocks at me at this point. Uh, but potentially we could look at further reduction on materials and services and collectively come back with, um, enough fund to c- uh, cover for these services.
That's correct. The, the only way to balance is either you reduce the expenses down or you bring in more revenue.
Okay, so we are looking at, how much again?
We're looking at roughly 10 to 25,000 dollars.
Okay, thank you. So we are looking at 10 to 25,000 dollars. Whether we wanna do it on the additional use of the fund balance, which, uh, it will be my preference because it's 50 million is, you know, we, I'm okay with that. Um, more, yes, yes, more comments, please. Uh, vice mayor Mohan?
You know, a comment was made about, uh, creative, uh, ways to fund different things and I'm assuming that regardless of whether we approve that or not, staff will be looking at creative ways to, um, make this whole thing work. So, um, in my mind, I don't think we need a C which says, look for creative ways. I'm, I'm assuming that that's being done anyway.
Okay, councilmember Chow? Uh, Chow first and then councilmember Moore and, oh, sorry, your light's not on, on my thing, councilmember Foo. There you go. So, and you go last. One minute, please.
So I, here is the proposal to bring information on the 43 current vacant.
I'm sorry, we're not talking about that item now. Uh, we, we're talking about this, whether we wanna do additional funding. That is another one you can, you can propose later.
Uh, oh.
We're looking at number eight.
Cost. So I guess, okay.
Councilmember Moore and then councilmember Foo.
Okay, I, I still believe that there, and I'm looking at the library maintenance, um, pages in particular. I do think that there are some creative solutions, um, for this without, uh, going into the, to the fund balance and I would like to have those, um, explored, um, perhaps through a memo. And the two areas would be library services and library, um, maintenance.
Councilmember Foo?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we could probably compromise on this. We, you know, I think that the, the point is well taken that there may be other places where we can get this relatively small amount of money before going to the general fund. I just want us to have a, a clear line of thought on where we're gonna head with it. So if they're not able to find, um, these monies somewhere else, then fine, go with the, the general fund. That's more or less what I'm thinking.
Councilmember Chow?
A question in terms of accounting. I think we are expecting that the 39 unfilled positions won't be filled the first month or a second month or the third month. Was, so when they are not filled, the city, even though we budgeted it for those position, we are not paying those salaries. So likely, those are, those are extra dollars. That's not even in the budget, right?
So through the mayor, I think what councilmember Chow is alluding to is that there will be salary saving from those unfilled position and they're absolutely right. Um, and again, this is where director Fowles gonna get mad at me. We can't quite, uh, mix funding like that, but this is where the creativity comes in. So, um, what I'm hearing is that there is a potential of, uh, uh, option C, which is to look for ways to cover for the, um, additional funding. Um, but best option is we look at other ways to look for that. However, if necessary, we could, and we have the discretion to, um, look into, uh, general reserve, fund reserve.
Actually, my preference is just decide what we're gonna do now and then instruct the staff to look for more creative ways to do funding, not contingent upon this. I, I prefer clean, uh, proposals. So I, I would prefer, let's vote on A or B. And if it's A, and then also another item is instruct, um, our staff to look for creative financing. That, that will be my preference, but it's up to my fellow council members to decide. So can we put that back up? The, yeah, sorry. So what I would like prefer is to just get A done, number eight, A or B, and then go back to more proposals, you know, staff go get more creative financing to cover this, but not contingent upon getting creative financing. I'd like to not mix those up. So that will be my proposal, so, um.
I agree.
Uh, the councilmember Moore, you go first.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not voting just yet. Um, so under, under Parks and Rec and I, I did bring this up, um, at a meeting a few weeks ago. With regards to the, uh, this, the services, the extra hours for, for the library, it was showing over 600,000 dollars. And the last time that we paid for the extra library hours was in, um, uh, 2019 and we paid, um, for about 438,000 dollars. But the joint powers authority for the library district has been able to cover that cost even though we've been budgeting for it since then. And so last year we had the 600,000 dollars in the budget for the extra hours and now we're down to around 300, um, and something thousand dollars for the, for the extra library hours. And, um, so that we have, we didn't actually pull that money, um, last year and, because we, we didn't need to. We got the, the, the joint powers authority covered it. And then on the other side is the, uh, library maintenance and, um, there, the contract is, um, it's actually 36,000 dollars for the fish tank contract and the joint powers authority agreement, um, in the budget is, uh, budget number 20, or agreement number 21-057. The, um, the maintenance of the building and the janitorial services, um, get, those bills go to the, the. The, um, the maintenance of the building and the janitorial services, um, get those bills go to the, the, um, library, um, district and they cover the maintenance, it's part of the contract that we have here. So it's showing, um, the eighty-eight thousand and, uh, employee compensation and benefits, uh, in there as well. Um, however, that's actually a pass-through, so, um, I, I still stick with the, uh, option C, um, be creative. There might be some other place within the budget and then if not, go to the general fund balance. But, um, I don't wanna see it done the other way because I'd rather see this scrutiny on the budget happen before because when June, um, uh, six, I guess, rolls around, we're gonna be pushing through, uh, this, a lot of material really quickly and this will go by the wayside, thank you.
So I see-
Ask a question on library budget, because it was brought up.
I think council member Moore made it very clear, uh, and that she would like to have a number C on it to explore the library budget issues and bring more creative funding, um, so that's a C on the, on, um, um, added to the A, and, um, I, I still prefer, because it could be more than twenty-five thousand dollars, we're gonna do, I prefer a clean one and then add another item to explore and, and add it, and bring it back on June sixth, instead of, um, that, that's my preference, but now we have A, B, and C.
And, and, and just through the mayor, just wanted to emphasize what, uh, Chris has mentioned, um, ten or twenty-five thousand dollars on the scale of an eighty-million-dollar budget. I, I, I have full confidence that we could come up with a ways to solve that problem.
Okay, so we, A, B, and C, I-
Library?
Make it, uh, do we still need questions on the library?
So do we, are we still budgeting for the extra library hours in this budget?
I, I don't believe that's the, um, discussion at hand right now, but we can definitely provide that clarification afterwards.
I think the, it seems there is a confusion on some, it seems we might be budgeting more on certain budget expenses that we actually didn't get billed by the library authorities.
So without looking, um-
Maybe your staff can get back to us on that.
Um, I, I think that would be a question for the budget team, whether that, that six hundred thousand dollars is still in the budget.
So this year, we've budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand for the library, uh, for the library, sorry, for the extra hours for the library. And you can see that here.
You mean, we still budgeted it for extra hours? I know for sure from the treasurer of the JPA that, that we don't have to pay for any of the extra hours. The, the, the library district covers it for all the cities.
Through the mayor-
Yes, please.
There's, there seems, seems to be great interest in exploring, uh, the budget for the library as a source of ten or twenty-five thousand dollars. So why don't we take that back as, what I'm hearing is consensus from the, from the, from the DA's, uh, do that exploration and bring back, uh, a recommendation, um, on June sixth, uh, with that as our primary focus.
Um, the, yes, that, that would be, my preference is not add to this item as a contingency. Through this item, vote A, B, or C, and then if C doesn't get chose, we can still instruct the, um, staff to bring back on the budget that, that day too, for library proposals. So now we have A, B, and C, council member Fung?
Yeah, so the question to council member Moore is, is Assistant City Manager Morley's comment responsive to what you are asking for?
I think he's saying he's going to look into the, the contract services for this, uh, the extra library hours and perhaps the, um, the maintenance and janitorial pass-through for the, um, for that, that other part for the library as well, because that's another, um, issue that's being covered by the, um, the contract, that the joint powers authority pays for that.
So I think it would be fair to have a conversation with the library to make sure that we can meet our obligation, um, and we would do that in partnership with them and then bring back a solution for the council.
Yeah, so that, that sounds like it is useful in any respect, so I, I would certainly like to see that just in general and I would be happy to otherwise, um, let staff use the, the unassigned fund balance for the present and we can figure out if we want to program any additional money that we get from the library, the results from this analysis, wherever we so choose.
So I really wanna emphasize, Christina, for us, we usually, very conserving our budgeting, usually have more money left than, um, you know, so this could be one of the items. So I'm comfortable just using the A, just general fund for this item and then explore more. So let's just take a straw vote, I think we have A, B, and C still, so council member Moore, your choice?
Uh, yes, so I've, I've contacted the JPA, so I'm going with C.
Uh, council, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Uh, A.
I vote for A.
Uh, A.
A.
Okay, so it's, um, four-one, so the additional item is to have the staff research on the library, JPA, and the extension and the maintenance issues and bring back in June sixth, see if we can save some more money?
Yes, we've noted that the information that we need to come back to council before June sixth as part of the packet for, uh, council to understand, to adopt budget.
Okay, great, that's added, and then council member Moore, uh, uh, Chow, I think you have one item?
Yeah. So I wrote down the information for the vacant position. I'd like the staff to bring information on the fort, is it forty-three or thirty-four, did I get the number right? The forty-three current vacant positions, including fourteen proposed to be cut and thirty-eight unfilled posi- thirty-nine unfilled positions, their- Oh, sorry, twenty-nine, sorry, bad math. Uh, their roles and impacts and bring options for potentially more staffing cut and their impact in services and expenditures.
May I ask a question? So, um, the original proposal is to cut gradually three until the tenth year, um, so, um, my question is, do you know for sure the twenty-nine or every year you're gonna evaluate that which ones are needed to be cut? Will you be able to even have this information by now?
Mayor Wade, great question, so we will not. Um, and, and the other point I wanna emphasize that, again, this is a planning exercise for our next year's budget. Um, as daunting as the CTFA result may be, maybe we will get lucky. So we really don't know what may happen in the next ten years, this is our worst-case scenario planning exercise. So we will not know which positions will be crucial and essential to keep the city operation going, not knowing what revenue that the city may be bringing, um, we may not need to cut additional. Um, however, what we're wanna focus is year one, we want to get to a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four and we believe that with the additional fourteen positions that has been proposed to eliminate, that will get us through year one. And as Christina mentioned, that we will bring a quarterly update to council every quarter, starting in November, every quarter, to br- to true up the numbers, so that council has more visibility and more transparency on what really is happening on the ground, so you can make adjustment then.
Okay, thank you, uh, City Manager Wu, council member Moore, you have your, uh, light on, please.
Thank you, I just would like to clarify, how many vacant positions are there currently? I was hearing forty-three, um, what is the actual?
Our, our current estimate said that we're closer to thirty, um, but we need to, uh, and that may include the fourteen we're already reducing, we were at, uh, closer to twenty-nine in, um, in April, we just haven't gotten the updated numbers, so I'll have to come back with the updates on that one.
Okay, so when it comes back and, uh, perhaps make it clear, um, how many vacancies we have currently and then, um, how many, um, you, you plan to have moving ahead, because it, I'm, it's a little bit confusing in the, in this, because I had thought that it was fourteen moving to twenty-nine, but now I'm hearing we're, it's, we, we already have about thirty vacancies? Thirty unfilled positions as of today?
Correct, but, but I believe that does include at least a portion, if not all, of the fourteen we're looking to eliminate because that number of thirty was back on April nineteenth before we developed the plan for which positions would be eliminated.
Okay, um, yes, if there could be, um, a slide that explains that more definitively, that would help, because I'm looking at, um, twenty-seven and twenty-eight and it's, it's not as, as clear as I would like it to be. Okay, thank you.
So, um, council member Chow has, um, an item that we would like to s-
So I understand the, the staffing challenges, so, but I think we are looking, uh, at a budget and we are dipping into general fund for six million dollars, so whatever information the staff would be able to provide, um, with the amount of time you have, will be appreciated. And, uh, we did add twenty-two positions last year, but I don't remember in the budget, when we approved budget, I didn't remember we approved that many positions, so I'm really curious, what are those twenty-two positions we did add last year and the year before?
So-
Yeah.
So we have, uh, council member-
We need, I need more information to make decision, yeah.
So I think we're voting on whether we want more information or not, because, um, I, I think that's, yeah, go ahead.
Point of voter, mayor, I, I thi- I think that, I, I'm not sure that a vote is necessary on that, I think it's within the, you know, the city manager's ability to, to, to hear the input from council and bring that back, um, uh, with, with the information that's requested to the extent that, that we're able to do so.
I, I do have a question, because, um, I think June sixth, when the, um, proposed budget, budget come back, I would like to clarify, this is not gonna be part of the discussion, because I'm happy with the ten-year reduction and the first quarter adjustment and second, so I am afraid that could be a, um, information item if the council wants at that time. It could be a information item, but not to be included in the decision of the, uh, budget proposal, that, that's my question.
So, so, um, thank you, Mayor Wade, so, um, I, I believe that, uh, information will be provided on the current vacancy that has been requested by council member Fruant. Um, we believe that with the fourteen positions elimination would justify the balance of the next year's budget.
Case, I am still, um, requesting a straw vote, um, beyond the information, we should consider options for potentially more staffing cut and their impact and expenditures. I think we have heard from multiple community members asking, um, why we didn't cut more. I think we do need to put that option there, doesn't mean we will do it, but that option should be there on the June sixth, so we have visibility, maybe we then will see, there is no need, that's fine, but at least the community needs to know we have really serious considered and there is really no need.
Can you put it up again, so we can see what, uh, are we starting to vote for?
Okay. Okay, so that's this one.
Okay, so we can all see it, so let's have a straw vote, council member Moore?
Um, it's like, yeah, I want, I want some clarification first, too.
Okay, council member Fung, your light doesn't come up on me.
So my, my, simple question is just, Madam City Manager, do you feel like you can actually provide this level of detail by June sixth?
Uh, we'll be able, through the mayor, we'll be able to provide information for the fourteen current positions, which has been requested in the informational memo. Um, I don't believe I will be able to even provide options in terms of staffing cuts for the next, um, year and then their ser- level service and expenditures.
Councilman, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan, do you have your hands up?
No, sorry.
Yes, I think you did have yours, no? Okay, council member Moore?
Okay, uh, so I made the clarification a couple minutes ago, this is saying forty-three current vacant, but it's more like thirty, right? Okay, and so that would be fourteen proposed to be cut plus fifteen or sixteen?
So, uh, just looking at it, this may bring us down to zero, pretty close to zero vacancies if we were to make that move, um, because some of the fourteen that are proposed in the budget are included in that vacancy number. We just need to determine how many of those are in there.
Okay, so I, I kinda wish that this, this proposal was, uh, to look at cutting one or two more.
Okay, so we, we have a proposal, do you want to amend it? Council member Chow?
I think I mentioned earlier, I'm not saying that we should cut fourteen, I noted down that, I just need visibility, maybe potentially more could be four?
Yes, we understand that.
Six, I don't know, I need visibility to even know.
And I think you made it very clear, you would like to have more information and the current proposal is to cut fourteen and then gradually, um, have a, um, you know, uh, the, as proposed, so, um, you're, and we understand what you're, uh, wanna- Council member Fung, now I see your light.
Yeah, a- again, as a point of clarification of the city manager, do you feel like you can provide the information in the second sentence, bring options for potentially more staffing cuts, six, four, six, eight, et cetera, and their impact on services and expenditures, uh, by the June sixth date?
We can certainly attempt, but no guarantees.
We have a proposal on the, on the table, can we vote on it, please?
Uh, I was, through the mayor, I was wondering if it could be modified to one comma two, rather than four, six, eight? I think it's, I think it's going to be quite a challenge. One, I just, one or two, um, as opposed to that, that number, I'm, I'm concerned that the four, six, eight is, is unworkable.
See multiple lights, uh, council member Fung, you're next, vice mayor Chow, do you wanna turn off your light?
I'd be willing to, to support one or two, that sounds like it might be doable.
Can I make a quick comment?
Vice Mayor Mohan?
You know, our, um, agenda for today is to balance the next year's budget and if we can balance it with fourteen, uh, vacant positions, uh, I think we should leave it at that, with the caveat that as vacancies develop during the course of the year, uh, we have these quarterly reports that, um, that come before us, that, that's some, that we can look at further cuts if necessary, uh, at that point, but since our, uh, charge today is to balance the budget, uh, let's, uh, not leave too many things sort of up in the air or, uh, ambiguous.
Okay, so, um, oh, can you put it that, that up, let's, let's see it? So let's just vote on it, because-
The pa- we have a six-million-dollar deficit, right? We don't have a balanced budget.
The budget is to use the general fund, the fifty million dollars to, um, compensate it for the first year.
Six-million-dollar deficit.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm-
I'm trying to answer for you. Okay, so we do have a proposal, um, can we have a straw vote? Can, can you put it back, back up?
Um, through the mayor, I was trying to see if it could be modified to be one or two, but it's still staying one, two, four, six, eight, um, which I won't support, I can support one or two, um, and then as- Mm-hmm, and then, and then I get, I mean, uh, what I would wanna do is get some feedback after the, the first quarter is ended and see how this, all of these cuts, how it, how things are working out, um, and, and look at it mid-year and then, um, moving forward, make adjustments.
Did, did you, did you change it?
I, I'll go with one or two, but-
Vice Mayor Chow, can you change it, please?
Yeah.
She just want one and two, not one, two, four.
I think one or two.
Okay, and you, you can, you can just leave it as is.
I've changed that either in June, is this fourth or sixth, in the next meeting?
June sixth.
June sixth. Or, or in Q one, as the city staff's workload permits, so I would like to consider one, two, or four. I think, uh, if we are doing the exercise, we should have options, thank you.
Okay, so, um, let's take a straw vote, council member Moore?
Uh, before then, I, I, I'm very concerned about the, the four, um, but I will vote yes, but I, I'm very concerned that that is going to be an exercise and frustration to try to meet that.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
No.
I vote no.
I vote yes.
No.
So the direction is, uh, to keep as, um, as proposed, yeah, but I think that the staff will update us, um, on first quarter or second quarter, third quarter, so things could change, right, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Wade.
Do we have any more proposals? Council member Fung, I don't see your light, I see your hand, yeah, go ahead.
So it's, it's not really a, a proposal, it's, it's more of a sort of final set of comments, a thank you to staff for sitting through this with us, getting through it, um, and in particular to, to CDD for preparing the, um, the desk item on development revenue estimates, I think it is really useful, I think it's also a, a sort of hopeful symbol, so, um, I would encourage members of the public to take a look at it, it's in the supplemental documents for- documents for today's agenda. One of the things I'll, I'll point to in particular is the total ongoing revenue that it projects. And this was a conservative estimate based upon what staff was telling us at a little over six million dollars. And if you compare that to where we were expected to be in fiscal year twenty thirty-three, our structural deficit would be five point two million dollars if we don't take this into account. So we would be back in the black at that point. I think it's also safe to assume that this is not the only thing that will get developed during that period of time. We have the housing element to go through. There should be other things that, that come along. And I'd also note, you know, in, in underscoring the conservative nature of the estimates, if you go back to Falco Parkway One, the new Apple building that would be built there, the estimate on property tax increase here is seventy-nine thousand dollars in the first year. Apple provided an estimate of their own at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So you can see that, that they've taken this conservative estimate very seriously. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. I want to thank staff and the city manager for having the, the suggestion to do these, the budget one-on-one meetings. This is the first time we've gone through and had this opportunity to have all of the department heads to ask the questions. And so I really appreciated that. Thank you for getting the budget book out. I was here at five in the morning to pick mine up on Saturday for my Monday meeting with it tapped. So it was, it's been super helpful. And I think each year that we go through this, we understand the budget more. And it's, it's a complicated, it's a complicated thing. And I hope that we reach out as much as we can to members of the public, making it understandable and accessible so that people don't feel intimidated about the, what we're talking about. Because we don't want to have this huge gap in, in information between the council that's being, having access, one-on-one access to, to everyone in the department heads versus the members of the public who, who come to the meetings. And right now, you can see we don't have anyone here. So I hope there's a lot of people watching on Zoom. But we want to make that effort to make this something that everybody feels like they can participate in and that they're on as close to equal footing with, with us as possible. I think that really helps. Thank you.
Want to make some comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Way. I too echo Councilmember Moore's comments. Thank you to the staff. I've done this many times in my life and I have nightmares of spending nights in, in city partitions with carrying sleeping bags wherever I go. So I hope you didn't have to do that. And if you do, my sympathies. Yeah, so the study sessions were extremely helpful, especially for someone like me. Got a lot of my questions answered, so made the process really simple. I also wanted to thank the public who participated in the budget surveys. It just seemed like a huge task. And I think I mentioned it to the city manager that I hadn't encountered, encountered anything like this before. So it's a valuable exercise and I'd like the public to know that all of us, I'm sure, read all the comments. And if we didn't take every single suggestion they made into account to balance this budget, it's not because we didn't read it or we didn't, it was just, it's just one part of the whole process that we all had to go through. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone and thank you to my fellow council members for getting us through today.
Okay, Councilmember Chau?
Yeah, so, listen. Thank you for a very well organized presentation. Every department really have tried hard to reduce within the department and proposed options and very thoughtful for proposals. And that, that's really, I really appreciate that. And then the prep session was very informative. And seems still not enough time because there are, the budget is so complex. However, the staff also provided a very, very good information on the website. And I think I mentioned in the meeting that the page, webpage on CTFT is very clear, the, the timeline and then what information city know. And there, so thank you for not only the material here, but also the, the material online, the budget page and the open golf page. I think, yeah, so thank you for all the, all the department heads for staying with us. And just amazing work. Thank you.
So I think there's enough thanks for the staff. Really appreciated the one-on-one really helped. But I really want to thank our public and our council members. I find our council members, we have different perspectives, but the detail oriented and then, you know, work to look for more money. Councilmember Moore, really appreciate that. And the thoughtfulness of, of Vice Mayor. And also, you know, as Councilmember Chau, I love your detail oriented, you know, gets more information. That makes us get more information too. And Councilmember Froom, very practical with legal advice. So I, I really love what we have right now. And I have learned from every one of our council members. So I hope that we can bring this into the community. And if our community members are not as well-versed as we are being versed, you know, educated by our, you know, expertise staff, that we could help them to understand. We are here to really work for the residents and work for the city. We're all here together. And, and I, I really want to thank everyone for being, you know, really show courtesy, respect, and intuitive, intuitive questions. So I want to thank my fellow council members and staff and the, the public who really engage with us. And tomorrow, we look forward to a, as vibrant, lovely, lively and meeting with really courtesy and respect and listening skills. So thank you very much. Councilmember, any councilmember has more last words? Can I have last words from the city manager then?
Thank you, Mayor Way, and thank you for all the compliments. I want to kind of emphasize that our appreciation towards council for spending your time with us to prep for the budget. It's not easy and I totally get that. And we appreciate the time today and the valuable feedback that we'll incorporate into the budget. And as Mayor Way alluded to, this is not the end of it. So we'll be back again, same plate, same time tomorrow with the members of the public. And we'll take those feedbacks from the public and incorporate into the final budget. Again, I just want to appreciate our, our effort and our appreciation towards council. We're in this together. So it's the community, the council, and staff. We're not going to get out of this challenge alive. And we, the only way to get through is to stick together. So thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. Tomorrow is your show. We're just going to sit down there and, and listen and be, be the audience. So thank you. The meeting is adjourned.